I'd like to call the meeting of the Quincy City Council Finance Committee to order. I'd ask the clerk to read the roll.
Counselor Andronico, Counselor Kane.
President.
Counselor Debona.
President.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Yang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Palucci. Chairman Phelan.
President.
Six members, you have a quorum.
We have six members, we have a quorum. At this time...
We can't hear you whisper.
Okay. Can we adjust the volume? Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Pursuant to the open me... This is a... I gotta read the open meeting law at the beginning of every meeting. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transitions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the meeting tonight. We're gonna be starting off the agenda with the capital improvement plan, and that will be... And the first item up tonight is gonna be the animal shelter. So I ask Commissioner Heinz to come up and give the presentation.
Good evening, committee members. Thank you for having us this evening. I'd like to start with introducing the project team that is here tonight for your presentation. We have two members of the Quincy Animal Shelter, Sandra Seines and Kit Burke. We have Lieutenant Bob Gillen. We have Paul Kallas from Hill International, the OPM on the project. We have Eric Nelson with the RFA, the design team. Next is Dave Scott, our in-house HVAC expert from Public Buildings. Next is Warren Friedenfeld from RFA as well. And on the far end is Gary Cuniff, our Director of Engineering in Public Buildings. So we're here tonight to speak to and present to you the long-awaited and much-needed Animal Control, Animal Shelter, K-9 Unit, our Animal Shelter building. So it's called the Animal Shelter, but it is, in fact, serving three different components of the city function. We thought it best to begin the presentation with discussions with you, with the representatives of Quincy Animal Shelter pertaining to the existing conditions of the building, which I will remind all was built many years ago as a dog pound, not ever really intended to be in the animal shelter, and is woefully inadequate in that role. And I would ask Sandra Seines to come up and begin that portion of the presentation.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. My name is Sandra Seines, and I've been a volunteer at the Quincy Animal Shelter for 23 years. I've had many roles over the years, and I now serve as the President of the Board of Directors. I have been involved in this project since its inception in 2015. Twenty-three years ago, I began volunteering at 56 Broad Street, and my most vivid memory is the day that I witnessed the euthanasia room being dismantled. The removal of that dreadful room meant that no cat or dog would be euthanized just because it was homeless ever again in the city of Quincy. For the last 23 years, our organization has found homes for more than 9,000 cats and dogs, but that's only part of our story. The Quincy Animal Shelter is a very important part of this community. And yes, we find homes for animals, but we do so much more. Since we began, the purpose of animal sheltering has changed dramatically. With the help of Animal Control, we unite... We reunite pets with families, and during times of financial crisis, we help families bridge the gap by offering food, matching them up with low-cost veterinary services such as vaccines and spay and neuter. We help people keep their pets, and when they can't keep them, we help them too. We have assisted in domestic violence cases. We identify cases of animal cruelty, abuse, and neglect, and we work with appropriate authorities such as the MSPCA and the Animal Rescue League. We are also proud partners with Pets for Patriots, and we match military veterans with adoptable animals. Sometimes we provide short-term care for our animals when their owners are ill, and we always promote responsible pet ownership. Our volunteer staff, which sometimes is close to 200 volunteers, cares for animals in our shelter seven days a week, 365 days a year, and we provide over $200,000 worth of services to homeless animals in the city. We do not receive any local, state, or federal funding, and we do all of this through our fundraising efforts, adoptions, and through private support. We have also maintained an outstanding working relationship with the city of Quincy and Quincy Animal Control. Since we began in 1999, the city of Quincy has changed in so many positive ways. The residents of the city of Quincy and the animals we serve deserve this new shelter. The Quarry Street Shelter will allow us to continue our work and support the community for generations to come. And for all of these reasons, we ask you to vote to fund the construction of the new Quincy Animal Shelter. Next, I'd like Kit Burke, our Shelter Director, to address the council. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. In 1999, the Quincy Animal Shelter partnered with the city of Quincy to provide much-needed improvements in both the treatment and care of its animals. In 2013, Quincy cemented its position as an animal-friendly city with its exceptional handling of the Puppy Doe case, successfully convicting a heinous killer and gaining national recognition. In 2020, Massachusetts put new stringent regulations in place for animal care facilities, including shelters and animal control holdings. Our Broad Street location is not only noncompliant, but it cannot be made compliant. The facility is outdated and in great need of repair, with substandard lighting, housing, and no separation between species. It provides no way to quarantine an animal control bite from the public, nor is it wheelchair-accessible. The Five Freedoms is a widely-accepted list of conditions which all animals are entitled to. The freedom from fear is the biggest problem at Broad Street, with no separation between cats and dogs and outdated kennel housing for the dogs. The Quarry Street location will provide many benefits to the residents of Quincy. Its proximity to the dog park will encourage people to visit and see what we have to offer. The multipurpose room will provide space for emergency housing for the pets of evacuees as mandated by federal law, in a space that's intended to house animals instead of on the gymnasium floor of one of our new schools. Also, for dog training, educational presentations, and the staff break area, it is a space which will allow QAS to run vaccination and microchipping clinics for residents. In 2021, QAS spent $115,000 on medical care for both its animals and, in extreme cases, the animals of residents in need. This included covering the cost of euthanasia for 12 residents forced to watch the suffering of their senior animals due to their inability to pay. QAS already provides food to residents in need whenever possible. We could imagine having a more permanent food bank in the Quarry Street location. Quincy is a progressive city with hundreds of new pet-friendly apartments and condos, sadly lacking a proper animal care facility. I urge you to appropriate the funding for the new shelter, and thank you for your time.
Next up will be Lieutenant Gillen of the Quincy Police Department, K-9 Unit.
Mine's different.
Oh, oh, sorry.
I'm used to touch screen. It's not touching. Down here, start.
F5.
Thank you very much. Good evening, council members. My name is Bob Gillen. I'm a lieutenant with the Quincy Police Department, also the K-9 Unit Supervisor, and I'm the officer in charge of the Animal Control Unit. In addition to that, I'm a K-9 handler. I handle an explosives-detection dog that's also patrol-capable. I'm here to talk a little bit about the Quincy Police K-9 Unit and our relationship with QAS. Next slide. So the Quincy Police Department fields a K-9 Unit. Its mission is to protect citizens of Quincy by detecting illegal firearms, explosives, or narcotics. In addition to that, the unit is used to locate lost children, Alzheimer patients, and similar persons in need of assistance. We can also use these dogs to track individuals sought by law enforcement. We can search buildings and schools for suspects or evidence of crimes, and we provide these services to any requesting federal, state, and municipal partner law enforcement agency that might not have these capabilities. Next slide. Okay, so the unit is composed of 12 K-9 teams. Nine of the K-9 teams are dual-purpose dogs, explosive-tracking dogs. Eight of the dogs and their equipment were purchased by Homeland Security Grants, and one dog was a rescue. Three... In addition to that, we have three single-purpose narcotics-detection dogs, and they were provided to the department. One was privately donated, and two were purchased through drug asset seizure funds. Next. So I could spend probably a whole hour on this. I won't, but how does a dog work? Well, every dog has a pot wolf in it. Man domesticated the dogs a long time ago. However, each dog, no matter how small, still has these certain drives. They have prey drives and hunt drives. They have defense and fight drives. They have play drives. And what we do is, as police officers, we try to bring these drives back out in the dogs and make those drives work so we can have a very effective locating tool. Right now, there is no electronic device equal to a dog's olfactory system. The dog's nose is 5,000 times, arguably 5,000 times, better than a human olfactory, and the government has spent billions of dollars to try to find something that'll work better than a dog, and to date, it has not been done. There's no electronic equivalent. I'll just talk real quickly on how a dog finds what we want it to. When a human being walks into a pizza parlor and they smell pizza, you know immediately that's pizza. Or if you walk into your house during Thanksgiving and you smell beef stew, you walk in, you smell beef stew. A dog doesn't smell anything like that. The dog smells the pizza... The sauce in the pizza, the cheese, the crust, the salt, and they discriminate. When they smell a beef stew, they smell the broth, the beef, the potatoes, and the carrots. So we use these... The ability of these magnificent animals to target that, and that's what we use to find what we need to, whether it's a lost human being, drugs, guns, or explosives. Next slide. So what are the breeds we use? First breed we use is the German Shepherd, arguably one of the bulletproof breeds that we use all the time. The next breed that we use is a Belgian Malinois. It's a variation of a shepherd, but it's a distinct breed. They have a higher prey drive, and they tend to do a little bit of searching... Search-detection work a little better than the shepherds. However, the shepherds tend to do a little better finding humans. Another variant we use is a Dutch Shepherd. And last but not least, we use Labrador Retrievers, and that is our rock star, Charlie. So Charlie, interesting enough, just hit his five-year mark, and he just hit $1 million in street value of seized drugs in the city of Quincy. In addition to that, Charlie has set the record. He brings in an average between $60,000 and $70,000 in seized cash. That's used by the department to continue the program. Using the Labrador Retriever and single-purpose dog has been so successful that we used additional seizure money to put on two more dogs just like Charlie. So the dog's trainings and certification... A Quincy Police K-9 must certify yearly under a recognized police training agency. They either train in Boston or with the Plymouth County Sheriff. But in addition to that, we have all of the Quincy Police Dogs independently tested by a national association, either the North American Police Work Dog Association, the United States Police K-9 Association, or the U.S. Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms. So all our dogs are triple-certified and tested yearly. So the K-9 Unit is not a... It's a little misleading. The K-9 Unit is not a standalone unit that sits around waiting for K-9 calls. We couldn't afford that on the department. So our K-9s are all assigned patrol officer duty, but they are a K-9-capable patrol unit. So if you see them driving around the north end of the city, the south end of the city, they're not just waiting for K-9 calls. They're doing regular functions as a patrol officer, but when their services are needed, either in the city or outside the city, they shift modes and respond as needed. Quincy Police K-9s are not used for crowd control. It is not in the mission profile. It's something we have never subscribed to. They're strictly a locating tool. A lot of the instructors like to say the value of the dog is in its nose, not its teeth. Quincy Police K-9s are 24/7. There's a minimum of two dogs assigned to each patrol shift, so we have coverage all the shifts. So how does this dovetail into our relationship with Quincy Animal Shelter folks? Housing the animal shelter with Quincy Animal Control and Quincy Police K-9 Unit will allow us to share resources, and we've been doing that previously. Essentially, because the two police units will be housed in the facility if you approve it, then the Quincy Police Chief or the Quincy Police Department will have responsibility for the security, and we plan on stationing dogs in and out of the shelter all three shifts. During an emergency, the shelter spaces that you'll be reviewing later on, occupied by Quincy Animal Control and the K-9 Unit, will serve as additional emergency pet sheltering areas to support QAS in case there's an emergency. We already have equipment that was provided by FEMA just for this purpose. We keep it in a trailer. We could set up an emergency pet sheltering area, and we pretty much tried... Had to do that in the storms in 18. Okay, the Quincy Police K-9 handlers serve as a backup Animal Control Officer when the Animal Control Officers aren't available. We plan to enhance that capability so we can stop calling kit in the middle of the night, which we do quite regularly. The shelter will provide an all-weather training location for the Quincy Police K-9s and the regional K-9s that we train with. The new shelter will also provide temporary housing for the Police K-9s when handlers or partner Police handlers have to leave town. Right now, they have to privately kennel their dogs. Some of the dogs are social, some of them aren't. Dogs are as different as individuals, so this will allow some of our handlers to be able to give us their dogs, and we can take care of them while they're gone. I know the questions are gonna be reserved for the end of the time, but I'd just like to say in conclusion, I'm in complete awe of Kit Burke and all the QAS volunteers. They've done a tremendous job, and I can't say enough about them. And your favorable consideration of this request would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Eric, if you can advance some. You should probably just stay here. The next topic that we thought we should address with the members of the committee is the interim facility that we are currently building out. First question's might be why. As you heard the representatives of Quincy Animal Shelter say, our existing shelter does not meet current state regulations, and they're catching a good bead of heat from the state inspectors, both for operational purposes and the health of the animals. So there was a need to address that, which, again, we could not accommodate in the footprint and in the structure of that building. So as an alternative, until the permanent shelter was readied, we did look to partner with adjacent municipalities in private entities, kennels and such, to partner with them to provide our operations and the Quincy Animal Shelter operations during the construction of the permanent facility. We were unsuccessful in that regard, so we had to move on to another plan, which was to fit out an in-from-home. We looked at various sites through the city, and the only one that really gave sufficient space for that temporary purpose and was accessible and would work for us is the existing green garage, one of the old Navy buildings out behind the moorings and behind the Kennedy Center on your way out to Squanam. It's a building that the Department of Public Buildings has used for probably eight or so years with the agreement and consent of the owner, and that owner is not the city of Quincy, but we had a deal to utilize it. So we did meet with them and spoke with them about this interim facility. They were agreeable to it, and with license from them, we did begin that fit-out. The fit-out actually came at somewhat of an advantageous time because it was... At the same time, we're about to gut 180 Old Colony Avenue for the beginning of the construction of the DeCristofaro Learning Center. So every single door... Every single door frame from 180 Old Colony is used in the temporary facility, saving thousands of dollars. We took the bathroom partitions. We took bathroom fixtures. We took ceiling tiles. We took lighting fixtures. We took furniture for the interim facility, as well as many of our city office buildings. We utilized all those building materials and more in the interim facility to help to cap the costs of doing that. And we were allotted up to $1 million to build this facility, and people might think that's somewhat wasteful on an interim facility, but it's larger than that. Not only was the state regulations and the operation of the animal shelter a major issue in the decision to do the interim facility, the cost implications of remaining in that building, the cost implications to the Public Safety Headquarters project were significant. We're anticipating an 18-month build-out for the animal shelter on Quarry Street, and during that 18-month period, were we to delay the construction and the site work for the Public Safety Headquarters, that would have cost $7.5 million. So by doing the interim facility, we're actually saving $6.5 million, as somewhat odd as that may sound. But it is true, and we've got our consultants that spoke to that. When the permanent facility on Quarry Street is completed and the various functions, the K-9, the Animal Control, and the Quincy Animal Shelter operation move there, that then vacates this building, half of which... Just over half of which was built out and fit out for the temporary shelter. The remainder of it is literally the only storage the Department of Public Buildings has, so that unbuilt-out space will remain storage for the Department of Public Buildings. But in addition, and I don't know that many know this, the in-house construction team of the Department of Public Buildings, the electricians, the plumbers, the painters, the carpenters, they were all housed in the Quincy Vo-Tec, and they were evicted when the Vo-Tec had to come down for the new Quincy High School. From there, they moved to the shops that were no longer used at the middle school level, the shops at the Sterling Middle School, which, when we had to take down the Sterling Middle School, they were again evicted. So at this time, that operation works out of a classroom and a half on the first floor of North Quincy High School. So there are days where the noise of saws are disruptive to the educational system. There's days that smells of paint have been disruptive. The parking of vans impacts the traffic flow in the facility. And then, that's from the school side. From the public building side, the space is inadequate. If the carpenters are using their wood tools, the painters cannot paint. If the painters are doing their things, the electricians can't get to their storeroom. So it was an interim solution at the time with the hope of finding a larger solution that has not yet come, and it is now before us. It is the intention that once the animal shelter and those operations move out of the green building at Squanam Gardens, that the construction crew of Public Buildings will move into that space. So much of the $1 million expense of the temporary... The interim shelter doesn't go away when they move out. The new roof is on the building. The building has been made structurally sound. It's got the new HVAC system. It's got a new electrical system. It's got an emergency generator we salvaged from Broad Meadows Middle School. It has the necessary bathrooms and plumbing. It's got all the space that's needed, divided into areas. The cat areas will be for painters. The dog area will be for carpenters. It was kind of laid out with both uses in mind. So that wasn't entirely expenditure that goes away when the building's vacated by the animals. It's something that remains. We will have ownership from it, depending on the next items before the council, and we look forward to being able to utilize that space for the blue collars of the department, separate from the administration of the department, going forward. Okay, so now we come to speaking to the glory pot of it, and that is the permanent home of these three functions at 99 Quarry Street. And for that, I will bring up Eric Nelson from our architectural firm, RFA, to speak to those matters.
It's a pleasure to be here to talk to you tonight and take you through the plans for an important new public safety building for the city of Quincy, the permanent Quincy Animal Shelter at 99 Quarry Street. So the building is going to be located, once again, off Quarry Street at the top of the hill, adjacent to the dog park. And the drive is already complete, and the site is largely... It's a 1.75-acre site, which is largely cleared and ready to go for the construction of the shelter. It was also somewhat symbolic to place the shelter where the dog park was because they are a shared community resource for the city of Quincy. The center... The location is also very central and convenient for servicing the community. So the site areas... Animal shelters are a complex dance between interior functions and exterior functions. Most animals kind of do better if they get to get outside from time to time. So basically, the way the building lays out, it is along the access road, and there's an entry point for the public parking. All of the public functions of the building are toward the left, close to the monument sign, and then the staff areas and animal housing areas array out basically along where the parking is, and each animal-holding area has its own exercise yard for those animals. At the top of the site is a sustainable feature of the building, a green roof. This green roof is at the same level as the sidewalk on that side of the site, even though the shelter functions are one story below, down lower on the hillside. And the reason that we nestled the building into the hill in this manner was to save s... site development costs, to take advantage of the upper-level connection to the existing dog park as a public resource, and to save energy because, basically, two walls of the building are pushed into the ground, and so it's much more energy efficient. So this is the floor plan of the new proposed shelter. It's just shy of 15,000 square feet. It is very compact in comparison to a lot of other shelters serving sizable cities like the city of Quincy. And it's shared, once again, by the Quincy Animal Shelter and also the animal control and canine units. The total animal holding capacity are 30 adoptable cats, eight adoptable dogs, and then animals that aren't ready to be adopted yet, 32 cats and 11 dogs, and then three canine dogs, for a total of 62 cats and 22 dogs. So the design of the building features three stone walls that step back as the building climbs up the hill. And this is obviously a nod to the history of Quincy. It's also a very durable, long-lasting, good-looking material that the community can take pride of. The main entrance to the facility juts out of the main stone wall, and it has a shed roof that basically is facing up and opens to the community. One other point to make about this view is that the walls to the right down low are ground-facing concrete masonry units, which we frequently use in animal shelters because they weather very well. They are resistant to animal byproducts, and they're cost-effective. So this project, again, this building, is a significant publicly-supported community resource. We're showing the green roof axis here, which in essence is an extension of the dog park. Dog park is very popular in the city, been up there many, many times, and it's a natural extension of that program to combine it into the shelter. As a green design feature, it's highly insulated, the roof, so again, most of the energy that's lost in buildings goes through the roof in our type of an environment. All of the plant species that will be used in the facility are animal-friendly and require minimal amounts of irrigation. So the facility is designed to be efficient. It is a tool to promote lifelong adoptions and move animals quickly through the shelter into forever homes. The spaces that you're seeing from left to right are, once again, the public entrance and services areas. The adoptable dogs are next to that in the first canopy. And then there's a multipurpose meeting room. And then going around to the back, leaving the public parking areas and moving toward the staff, volunteer, and canine parking areas are the non-public dogs, and then the van garages for the vehicles. So the interior environment of this shelter is designed as a welcoming, warm, inclusive space. It is not a pound anymore, that the whole idea is to provide a facility that nurtures the animals and their relationships with the people that come to adopt them. Secure public exploration is a huge element of the designs that we develop. And you can see here, running down the corridor, there's a reception desk for people that come in with questions or need to be directed. Across from the desk, we have interview rooms for adoption and surrender counseling. And then down at the end of the corridor is the cattery. Once again, all of the finishes in the facility are designed to be durable and easy to maintain. Clean, you know, clean conditions are critical. So going into the facility, the plan is split, basically, in half with the Quincy Animal Shelter in the upper areas, more towards the public areas, and then the Quincy Police Animal Control and Canine Unit in the other portion of the building. The shelter areas are then divided into public access areas and support areas. Security is obviously a critical concern of the proper operation of a modern animal shelter. So when you come into the building, there's a small seating area, reception desk, and then across from the reception desk, we have the adoption or surrender counseling. Then there are public restrooms, and then you get the entrance into the cattery area. Cattery area is designed to support both groups of cats and cats in individual cages condos. And then there's a view that you saw before for the public entry, the cat adoption areas. There's a little view in the middle of the screen that shows some of the little play structures that we typically populate those areas with. And again, the whole idea is to engage with the community, to get people to come into the shelter and adopt the animals. And then you have the, turning to the right and moving down the screen, public has access, then, into the dog adoption areas. And dog adoption areas are both inside and outside. The dogs have access to a transfer door that's inside of the, each individual kennel or run, and that transfer door can be opened up so the dog can move to the outside space. So this is great in terms of humane treatment of the animals. It's also wonderful in terms of the efficiency of the facility because the caregivers can very easily move dogs from the inside to the outside, and then from the outside through a fenced corridor to the adjacent exercise yards. Support areas include spaces for food preparation and bowl cleaning, a central laundry area, very modest administrative spaces for key staff, and then a small clinic. The clinic area has an exam room, which will be used by both the Quincy Animal Shelter and Animal Control. And then there's a very small treatment area, surgery prep, and a one-single spay-neuter Storage areas are provided along the back of the building. And again, it's always important to note that in a shelter like this, what we generally find is that expansion, to some extent, is frequently needed as the years go by, and these storage areas also double as places for the facility to expand. Then we'll take a look at the animal control and canine. So animal control is down toward the bottom of the site. The staff entrance is on the left-hand side. You come in, there are lockers on the corridor, and then there's access to a very important component of modern animal care, separation of animals into adoptable animals and non, animals that are not ready to be adopted yet. So we have stray and surrender dog housing ward here. There's a quarantine, two runs for quarantine bite dogs, and then two runs for dogs with infectious illnesses that need to be isolated. This also meets the state mandates and association of shelter veterinarians guidelines for the proper functioning of an animal shelter. Then moving back into the heart of the facility, there's a storage area, there's office space for two officers, and then we have two garages. The center garage also doubles as a wash bay for the vans because materials that come out of the vans cannot be washed into the city's stormwater drainage, so it has to be done inside. And then the canine areas are in the most private part of the site, toward the back. There are two, once again, two garages for the canine unit. And then there's a small office lavatory facilities and an interior and exterior housing run for three dogs. And then some images, and the images are of other facilities that we've built previously that are similar to what we would expect will be here. And now I'm going to turn over to Paul Callis to talk about appropriations and schedule.
Thanks, Eric. So my part of the presentation here is to talk about the cost of this project. This project, you know, from what you've seen in the slides preceding this, is, will be a, would be a valuable community asset to the city of Quincy. And however, public projects these days are not inexpensive. So if we could go to the next slide that shows the breakdown of what the appropriation that's going to be, that's requested here tonight for this project. To build this project, it's a public Chapter 149 project for building construction. The estimated cost is $13,950,000. We understand that you received a package that's got the detailed construction estimate that is approximately that amount of money. We rounded up just a little bit. But in addition to that, there will be needed funds to cover utility company fees, which is bringing the electrical service and other services to the site. Then also, even though the site is pad-ready, it's excavated, it's a flat site and so forth, there's going to be earthwork that's going to be required, that's going to require a geotechnical engineer to review that, and the cost of, you know, of the excavation for that, as far as anything that isn't, that we don't know about at this time. So there is $100,000 for that. Furniture fixtures and equipment, $100,000. That may strike some people as not being a lot of money for furniture fixtures and equipment for a facility of this type. However, much of that furniture fixtures and equipment are going to be in the building construction portion of the project, and the reason being is that much of it is built-in. The kennels and the dog runs and so forth are actually built-in, and as well as some of the facilities for the clinic. And we have a change order contingency of $750,000 for a brand-new building out of the, coming out of the ground. This is perhaps a little bit more than we usually carry. However, the inflation that we're experiencing right now in fuel and in construction materials are such that we thought that it would be prudent to have this a little bit on the high side. And this appropriation then adds up to $15 million. Next slide, please. The schedule right now that's being proposed is to have final bid documents prepared and out on the street for bidding about the first week of August. The project is fully designed. Right now, the project is, the drawings and so forth are being prepared for being put out to bid. Then the filed sub-bid opening would be about the 1st of September. General contractor bid opening, the 9th of September, and then look to be, have our little bidder under contract before the 1st of October. And we're showing the 20th of September, having a kickoff meeting and starting construction, you know, the very beginning of October. Substantial completion date then would be about 14 months after that, the end of November, and looking at having the building ready to be occupied by January of 2024. So that concludes my two slides. Thank you.
That conclude the presentation? Commissioner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it does. But I would note one thing. We did speak to the insulation in the roof and other energy efficiencies. One thing I do want to point out specifically is, within this construction contract, is the bringing of electric conduits across the access road to the large sloped field across the street and into the electrical room of the building. So we can, if it's elected and we add it to our list of sites, we can put a solar array on that slope and generate a good bit of the electricity that will be needed by this building. This building is 100% electric. It's not going to burn on-site fossil fuels, with the understanding of moving forward with the greening of the grid and our own efforts with the solar field. So I just wanted to point that out. But that does conclude it.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, I'm going to open it up to the other, to my fellow counselors for questions. Counselors, Council Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Paul. I just want to start by saying that, you know, conceptually, I don't think that there's any doubt that there's a need for this. No, wait until you.
Indulge me for one second.
Sure.
I'm sorry about that. Go ahead.
No, no apologies needed. I was just saying that, you know, just want to start off by saying, conceptually, I don't think that there's any doubt that this is very much needed and wanted by the community, something certainly that I support. You know, I want to thank you and obviously Sandra, Kit, and frankly, everyone here for all the work that they've done over the years and with very little. And so I think it's really exciting to see that, you know, this is in the works and to be able to provide, you know, a much more updated facility with much better resources is something that I'm excited to see. That being said, we are here in a finance committee meeting, so I just, I want to sort of shift and talk, you know, about the build-out and then also the finances behind this project. So the first question I had, as we were going through this, was a timeline, and I did see that at the back of one of the packets that was provided to us was a timeline that this is expected to be occupied in January 2024. So for the project management over the course of the next 18 months, this is one very large project under a very tight timeline, you know, and this is a question I'll be asking to for all the other requests tonight as well, is obviously, you know, the ability to see this work through in the timeline that's being provided. So do you have a project manager who's going to be, you know, managing this project specifically to make sure that we hit all the deadlines to be able to open in January 2024?
Yes, Counselor, we do. That Hill International is that firm?
Who is that? I'm sorry.
Hill International, that's the firm that Paul Callis is employed by. We went to bid and we procured that firm. They are an internationally-known owners' project management firm. And he has been amazing and taken a whole lot of the share of this and taken it away from me and my department.
Okay. So, if folks have questions, ourselves included, right? If we have any questions during the duration of the project, would we, you know, come to you with any of that? Or would this be a question where there's a project, specifically a project person, a project manager from the Hill management team, international management team that, you know, we could reach out to or, you know, do we have that information?
Yes. So, I would request respectfully that those questions do come to me and I can direct it to the appropriate persons. You may want to, in the first instance, CC, Paul, on it, and we can share obviously all that contact information. But just so there's a, I'm aware of what's going on. If there's communication directly with Hill, then I'm not aware of, that's not a great situation, so.
No, of course. I mean, like streamlined communication is always great, where you've gotten a lot of correspondence, certainly over the last week, but even over the last couple of years when folks are asking us questions about what's going on. So, for us to know, you know, who is that point person, who can we go to when questions do arise that we can get back to constituents is, is really helpful. So, thank you for answering that. The next question I had is, so, you know, we have been talking about this for, for quite a few years now, and I'm just curious to see, you know, from the first time that we started talking about that access road to the animal park and then talking about a new animal shelter, could you just sort of talk bird's eye level, right, about what were some of the changes that were taken into consideration from when we first started having those conversations to now? And what considerations were taken into play when designing this project that's in front of us now?
Certainly. I think probably the foremost consideration was being proximate to the dog park and having it central, relatively central in the city overall. Another was obviously cost concern. This is a highly specialized type of building, an occupancy of building. It's got many systems that most buildings do not have, internal vacuum systems and wash-down systems. It's got four, if not five, completely standalone HVAC systems because you can't share the scent of one species in the space of another species. The wash-down systems, there is a good bit of site work because of the history of the site, having been the quarries. There's a good bit of, of field work and retaining wall, that type of work that has to happen. So, as Eric had mentioned earlier, that's one of the reasons the building was driven into the slope was to get it as far uphill as possible to cause us to have as, as small as possible of retaining walls and, and site fill. But as to the design of the building, that's one of the reasons we are as far out as we are. We went back to the drawing board a few times. A few years back, when the program was first brought to you, that, the building was more than 60% larger than the one that's before you tonight. So, we cut out massive amount of square footage, and we did that by going back to the stakeholders and really seeing what are the wants, what are the needs, what are the, we'd love to seize. And they quite respectfully were very, very practical in that exercise, to the point that even the folks in the Quincy Animal Shelter were telling the architects, no, we don't want that. So, it was, it was a great process. We cut out large areas, particularly, it was originally designed with a full-blown veterinary suite that would take in animals from the public, do all kinds of surgeries, all kinds of procedures that we thought the city of Quincy need not be involved in, both for a functionality perspective and a liability perspective. So, those whole functions and other, other resources, other functions were cut out of it. And we came up with a, the footprint that you have now. And quite frankly, we were ready to go to bid, I believe it was in September. Yeah, right now, our filed sub-bids are already approved, our vendors, as are our pre-qualified general contractors. That's done. We were on the eve of going to bid. And the folks from the Animal Shelter came back and rightfully so, because when we did the value engineering, we did cut back the building, and to some degree, we threw the baby out with the bathwater. We reconfigured the space within the building without enlarging the building at that time to give the multipurpose room and to give some other functions, to give the limited clinic that's here that they felt was critical. So, we did go back to the drawing board a few times. It did take us a good bit of time to do so, but we wanted to do it once to do it right. We didn't want to hit three-quarters and have them still not happy and not fully functional with today's standards on this type of a care facility. So, you know, we just took, took our time and did it right. So, cost was always a factor. The interior finishes, we, a couple of weeks ago even, went back to the table on the interior finishes on, on cost of tile versus vinyl versus painted floors and that type of thing to draw back that cost.
Okay. So, to that, and we did model this after, when you're talking about picking up materials and, and finishes, you modeled it after other animal facility, like, you know, whether it's on like the WAMVCA, places like that, right?
Correct. This architectural firm specializes in animal facilities. And they brought to the table a host of understanding and information and history. And it was kind of an odd education, but it was a good one.
Great. The other question I have is, so it was explained, was the, the furniture fixtures and equipment. When I looked at the, the sort of general breakout here, it did seem, $100,000 did seem a little bit low for all of that, but then again, understanding now that the bulk of that is built into the $13 million building construction. So, then if that is the case, then what is the furniture fixture and equipment line item cover?
That will cover technologies, copiers, printers, computers, various refrigerators, things like that. The desks, the workstations, those type things are built-in. The shelving in the storage rooms are built-in. So, it would seem that, that F and F and E at $100,000 is low, but there is a ton of it that's transferred to the construction cost.
Okay. And are we bringing anything from the current and/or the temporary animal shelter over to this one?
I'm sorry, what's?
Are we going to be bringing anything over from the current or the temporary animal shelter to this new facility?
The current cages and things for the animals that go into the interim shelter, but my understanding, and correct me, they're not going to Quarry Street. Is that correct? The cage, cages and things?
Broad Street to East Gwinnett.
But not East Gwinnett to Quarry. That's correct. So, from Broad Street to East Gwinnett, but not East Gwinnett to Broad. There are different requirements in the housing. They need solid walls, so dogs in adjoining cages can't be scratching and biting at each other, things like that, that the current ones do not provide.
And then, when it comes to the building construction number, so the one that's on the slide is slightly different from the one that's in the detailed breakout package that was provided to us from Hill International. So, the one that was provided to us from Hill International, right on the second page, the main construction cost summary, and it does say that this is 90% construction documents cost estimates, so it's not 100. It's at, you know, the total estimated cost there, I believe with contingencies built in there, is $13,669,423. And the one in the, the presentation to us is $13,950. So, there is a difference here of about $280, a little over $280,000. What is, what is that difference between these two numbers that are being presented to us?
Basically, it was rounding up for escalation purposes. There's escalation built into the budget, but that was further escalation. The rates just went up yesterday or today and things like that.
So, is the, the, when you're saying you're building it off of us, like the, the increased costs, is the $13,950 based off of costs that you're seeing today? Or is that just an estimate that you're basing off of?
That thing's not working. I'm trying. I'm going to ask Paul. I don't want to.
Do you mind just coming over to the microphones, please? Thank you.
That $280,000 difference is for escalation that we actually don't really have a great handle on, other than the fact that what we see around us. For instance, the, this whole project was estimated a year ago, before we went back to the drawing board, at nearly $12 million. It went up a million and a half dollars, basically the same number of square footage, between July of last year and May of this year. And what we're seeing in escalation for various things is such that the idea of rounding up that $280,000 seemed like a prudent thing to do, as I mentioned in the presentation. It's just this now, this last estimate, which has some, has escalation built into bidding the project in September, built into it. But we've seen on, on another project where the same building was estimated three months ago, and it has millions of dollars more in, in estimated cost built into it for the same building, same architect, everything the same. It's just the, the environment that's out there for, for bidding and building projects now is very, very hard to predict, and we think it's prudent to have that extra cushion in there, you know, to be able to cover that possible escalation.
Okay. I mean, I know that the P M C, the lower amount that I'm referring to, the date here is from May, so it's a couple of months back, not necessarily from a year ago. And so, again, that $280,000 difference is from a few months ago. And I would just like to see, I know that, you know, there's questions that we're asking today that we can get more information on. That would be one, if I, if I could just see a breakout of that difference and how much of it is in an actual, you know, break, I'm sorry, an actual increased amount based off of the estimates that you receive and how much of it is a buffer that you'd like to create. Does that make sense?
Yeah. It is, it's definitely above the, the number that we, that we put on the slide is $280,000 more than the estimate. No question about it. And what that breaks down to is really a, is more like, you know, based on kind of like what our experience has been in the last year, looking at the way that construction costs have escalated.
So, you're saying none of that $280,000 is attributed specifically to any one particular increase?
Oh, well, it's very interesting. The, when we estimated this project a year ago, steel bar joists, which was the structural system for holding up the roof of this building, were unavailable, completely unavailable in the market and the, and expensive, but the, but they were completely unavailable because there was none in the market to be had. The same thing is happening right now with various build, building materials. There are some where substitutes are available. And, but however, at the same time, you know, the, not everything is available to the, to the builders in the market at this, at this time that, that there, you know, it's just not, some things just aren't available, and it's really pretty arbitrary as to what things are and what aren't. And the, and as a result, it's just a very, very crazy market and environment to be in at this time.
Yeah, I know. But that's what I mean is, I just, so my question isn't, you know, is it too much of an overage? I'm also concerned that if it's not enough of a buffer that we're creating, I don't want there to be any reason to create any delays here, right? And so, if that $280,000 comes from, you know, materials that you're looking at and you see an actual number of a difference between May and today, when you're asking us for this financial request, that'd be helpful to see, right? If that number is coming from, I just, what I'm trying to say basically is, I just want to have a full understanding of where that difference comes from and make sure that it is enough to cover any potential overages coming forward. Because again, I don't want there to be a delay, but this is a financial request, so I want to also understand where that difference comes from. So, again, if you don't have that information today, that's okay. I know that we, again, were able to ask some questions for some follow-up, right?
Follow-up.
That'd be great. Thank you.
If we could, the price has escalated to today.
Thank you. And then, Paul, I wanted to ask you, you had mentioned, and I appreciate you mentioning that there is potential to put some solar panels on the roof, obviously to make this more of a green building. Is that what you?
No, not in the roof of this building, across the street, across the drive up to the park. So, we have to excavate into the street to bring the sewer connections into the lines that were brought up at the construction of the road. So, we're going to just continue another 10 feet across the road and put in sufficient capacity of electrical conduits in the concrete case that National Grid requires so that we can later design and install a solar field on the slope, the wildfire flower and weed slope across the street above the stormwater retention basin and tie that into the building system.
Okay. Moving in that direction, I just wanted to ask, when I was looking at the, the renderings here for the parking, I didn't see if there were any designations for electric vehicles. Is, is it going to be fed out for that?
There are.
There it is? Okay.
I think there's four. Okay. So, six. And then also, there's provision within the parking garages so that the city vans, the animal control and the canine van, when appropriate vehicles are available, the conduits and things will be in place. And then at that time, we would acquire the then-most efficient charging units and install them into the infrastructure that we've built with the building.
Great. Okay. And then the last question I have is, is this about, about operations? So, you know, I know that, and correct me if I'm wrong, actually, I don't want to make assumptions. Can you just, currently, with the facility we have, where does, where does that come out of our budget to actually operate the, the facility now? Or even like the canine unit, I know that comes out of the police budget, right? So...
So, yeah, canine actually doesn't, at this time, work out of 38 Broad Street. There's, there's no presence there. The animal control salaries in that operation, I believe, does come in under the Quincy Police Department annual appropriations in their budget and, and building needs. But the utilities, maintenance, other issues that go on, they're charged to the Department of Public Buildings annual appropriation.
Okay. So, moving forward, when we have this new facility, obviously, there's going to be expanded services. So, you're thinking logistically, you know, we're going to look at increased operating costs, you know, potentially for proactive operations like community engagement, right? Notices, letters, events and whatnot, and staff, right? To obviously make sure that there's staff in this building as well. So, where are we looking? Is that going to come out of public buildings? Is that coming out of the, the police department? I'm just trying to think of the long-term financial impact as well.
Yep. We do anticipate with the larger facility and the, the other departments, the animal control and canine in there, we wouldn't ask the animal shelter people to clean our spaces as they clean theirs now. So, it is anticipated there would be a custodial presence, and that would be charged to the Department of Public Buildings. I'm not aware that this facility would trigger any change in personnel or number of personnel in either the canine or the animal control function. I would imagine energy costs will increase with the larger facility. And the, it's kind of weird, but the more efficient building, the energy costs go up because of, it being electric and such, and that's more expensive than some of the other fossil fuels. But in the long term, when we go green with the grid, it, it pays out then. It's one of the reasons for making the provision to go across the street with the solar field is to help keep the, the costs down here.
Okay. If we could, I just, I, I don't know if you have a hard breakout for that yet, but if we could just get an anticipated breakout of increased staff, I know you said custodial staff, right? I want to make sure that obviously this new facility has the support it needs, right? So, if you can just provide a breakout and estimated cost for sustaining this facility moving forward. Obviously, I know that they'll be built into, I imagine, our budgets moving forward as well, so that would just be helpful to know. So, with all the questions I had for the animal shelter and the facility, I just want to say again, thank you for putting this together. Again, it's, I know a long time coming. Specifically to, I want to thank Lieutenant Gillan. I know one of your canine officers very well and have been up to date with, you know, all of the travel needs it takes for your canine officers to travel and to make sure that they're staying up to date with their training needs. I mean, this is somebody I know who's been trained as a canine officer for years and years and years, and they're constantly traveling to other cities and towns to do more training with their, you know, directly with their dogs and on their own. And so, to have this expanded facility where, you know, those officers can train right here in Quincy, I think is a great asset to have, and it saves us a little bit of money, right? I, I've also seen them in action too and see how incredibly talented these officers are and these dogs, you know, to be able to sniff things out in like the pitch dark, right? It's really, it's an amazing thing to see. You don't want to go anywhere near them and pet them, right? Because they trained for one very specific thing. But they're just, between the officers and the animals, again, Lieutenant Gillan, they just do a bang-up job. And to be able to have this kind of a training facility for them to, again, stay right here at home as opposed to constantly having to leave the city and the state, I think is a great thing. So, really looking forward to this. Again, just, you know, as we are in a finance meeting, I'm interested to see some of those follow-ups with the numbers. But outside of that, I'm excited to see this open in 2024. So, thank you, Paul. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay. Next up, Council Mahoney, and then Council President DeBono.
Hi. Thank you. I'm going to start, I'm going to go a little bit backwards. So, in 2017, what was approved for this budget for this particular project?
If it's appropriation, I'm thinking of, was 3.5 million.
And what happened with the 3.5 million? What did we do with that? Because that's not, that's not actually, that's above the 15 million.
That's above this, correct.
Yeah. So, I just want to make sure that we're, the general public needs to know exactly what we're, so right now, 3.5 plus 15 plus a million for the temporary location, right? Is that?
The million dollars is actually coming out of the relocation expense of the public safety headquarters.
Okay. So, so let's start with the 3.5 then, Paul. What, what did we do with that?
The 3.5 million has to date carried us to this point with design, site design and engineering and the architectural design of this building and its, each of its iterations and redraws. It also went towards installing the water and sewer infrastructure from Quarry Street up to, under the road, up to the site of, of this structure.
So, it was the road? I'm sorry. So, it included the road, right?
It included, include partial funding of the road, yes, and, and the utilities for this building under that road.
So, both roads? Because I know there was a one road, and then that road didn't work out, and then we did another road. There was two different roads.
I'm not aware there was a road that didn't work out. There was a, a construction road that was put up there.
So, construction road to get to the area to kind of get the, to level the world, the work that you need to do to get the permanent road in, correct? I just want to understand that. So, it was two roads?
Correct. Yes. It wasn't a construction road, it was Baldur's in Dirt type thing. But yeah. So, there was no separately constructed road that was then rebuilt. It was an access road for construction vehicles.
I guess the reason why I'm asking that was because there was no transparency to the public as to what was happening up there. It was just kind of happening when we were asking for updates. We weren't getting it, so we really didn't know what was going on up there since I've So we really didn't know what was going on up there since I've been on the council. This has been something that I've been asking for annually.
That wasn't within my purview. I can't answer that.
Yeah, well, being asked every year to come before us with this project to get an update on it was something that was, it wasn't just me, it was other councils asking.
I'm sorry, I can't speak to the dog park. It wasn't my responsibility.
Not a criticism, just, just, just an observation, Paul. So, so $3.5 million that paid for the water and the sewer and the design costs?
Water and sewer, site costs, engineering costs, soil testing costs, the architectural expertise, the Hill International's fees to date.
Okay. Could we also, I'd ask that before we make an approval for any of this, could we get a breakout of that $3.5 million that's been expended to date on all of the things that were just said? Because this is, this project's been going on for a long time. And one thing I wanted, I want to say before I go on is, you know, I have a great appreciation for the animal shelter and the people who run the animal shelter. I'm an animal person, so it, it really is something. It's a disgrace as to what it is like over there. And it's been like that for a lot longer than, than this project has started. So this is something that does have to happen. The reason why it became noticed and became something that we needed to address was not because the animal shelter was saying, we need more. It was because the city of Quincy wanted to put their public health, public safety headquarters over there. And because of that, the relocation has to happen for the animal shelter. That was in 2017. And here we are in 2022 and the escalation of costs have gone up to $15 million and three and a half. The site was picked in 2017, the work was done, $3.5 million. But I just want to make sure as I'm asking these questions, that the people here understand that I want to make sure that we can locate you in the right place, but I have an obligation, a fiduciary obligation to the taxpayers, everybody in the city of Quincy. So when I'm asking these questions, it's because I'm concerned about the escalating costs and the fact that this administration promised something in 2017 and we're in 2022. And although I love the fact that, you know, when we're talking about escalations of costs and on $280,000 in budgeting higher for things because of the date that we're in, this is a project if it was done back when it was supposed to be done between 2017 and potentially 2021 or 2019. It should have been done by 2019. By the timeframe that we have here, would have been probably closer to $7 million.
Respectfully, just, well, I was asked a question, so. The relocation of the shelter isn't driven exclusively by, it is impacted by and driven by, but not exclusively by the Public Safety Headquarters. The fact that the building no longer met the regulations that were adopted in 2020 is a major factor.
In 2017, we were making these decisions. In 2020, the regulations.
And the regulations changed in 2020.
Yes.
And in 2017, when we came here, I believe the ask was $7 million, but the plans were not developed. So the council gave $3.5 million and asked that the, the project come back.
So Paul, if you want to fight with me about that, that's fine.
I don't want to fight you. You want to be transparent, I would like to give the information. The project wasn't ready for construction in 2017. The council, the finance council and the council asked to go back, develop the plans and come back to us.
So six years, it took, it took us six years to develop the plans to come back to us.
It did.
And it wasn't a priority for this administration when we had many other priorities that came before it and the escalation of costs is because of this administration and nobody else. Because this is a project that was with you, with the city, and we've been asking every year for an update since I've been on the council for this project because it's something that needs to be taken care of. Now with that, we're going into a temporary location. So my next question is for that temporary location that you're already doing work with, that you got sign off from the owner, who owns the building that we'll be purchasing that building?
The building is, the fee ownership is with Elder Housing Corporation, who has a three, a 298-year ground lease to one of the Edward A. Fish Associates. The Ed Fish and Peabody Properties, they operate and manage it. They've ground leased it to Squanam Gardens Housing LLC, number one and number two, the groundhold condominium leaseholds. They have it as part of the zoning approval that allowed the cluster development of those two large buildings that are the moorings that have been very successful. The zoning board put a condition on the remainder of the land and that building that it was not to be used for further housing development and could only be used for storage of elder housing and the moorings.
So when did we start doing the work over at that elder housing building?
Start doing the work, when?
When did you start doing the build out for the temporary location at the elder housing service?
I want to say it was September or October of 2021.
And it's now June of 2022 and we're doing some house cleaning by doing a eminent domain taking of that, correct?
Correct. Both the moorings and elder housing are remendable to the taking. We've been literally using the building for years. Public buildings, we got our, all our paper goods and cleaning supplies and all that for the year are delivered at once at the fiscal year and stored and distributed from there. And there's other equipment storage, boilers that are taken out of, that aren't old. So it's been used for a number of years. This is a, a new use for it, so we thought it was time to clean that up.
Okay, and it's going to cost a million dollars to take, million dollars taking and for the development?
No, that's not accurate.
So what's it going to cost to buy the building?
The taking, the agreed to fee for the taking is $150,000.
Okay.
So we get the building, but more importantly than just the building, we get the land around it and the land all the way across, high dry land, all the way up to the border of the land that is the Kennedy Center, which for years we've been trying to develop the back area for passive senior use.
Yeah, I'm aware of all of that.
It's been stymied by regulatory people at the, at the Army Corps of Engineers on the wetlands issues. So this will provide the city ownership of upland immediately adjacent to the Kennedy Center and will allow that development. It's a very large parcel of land.
Let's stay on target because we're not talking about the Kennedy Center. So I appreciate that. I know that that's something that's been on the target for a long time as well. My concern is, is that where we're going into this temporary location. So this temporary location is then going to become, I, I think what you said was it's going to become the.
Shops and storage.
The shops and stuff. Is there going to be, are you going to have to put a bay back into that building for, do you need to drive in to bring any of the equipment into any of that stuff?
The far end of the building that's not being built out at this time retains its overhead doors.
Okay.
It's about the condition as they end there. They are still there. So if it's decided at that time that they are needed, they can be replaced then. If they're not needed, they can be infilled then.
So the plan is, is that you're going to put the temporary location for the animal shelter into this building and then eventually it's going to be part of the building maintenance and we won't have to do any extra work to it because it's already been kind of retrofitted, right? There'll be no, there'll be no more investment into that building after we do this.
There's, for the part that's built out, there's no need to do further renovations down the road.
And the cost.
The part that's not, that can be the dead storage as is.
And the total cost for that temporary location is going to come out of the, the, what's it coming out of again?
It's the relocation expenses of the Public Safety Headquarters project.
So instead of coming out of the animal shelter budget, it's coming out of the police headquarters budget?
My understanding it was provided in that budget, yes.
Okay.
And it's, it's to move the shelter like any other building are, are used that's relocated.
So if we were moving the shelter up to Corey Hills, would we have had a million dollars that would have been deducted from the 15 million dollars that we're doing, that doing for this project then?
No, because as I said, the build out remains behind. It has a utilitarian use for the city. So it's not a wasted million dollars.
No, I think you're missing what I'm saying. You're saying that there's a relocation fee coming out of the, to the public headquarters, the, the police public headquarters relocating the Quincy Animal Shelter and it's going to a temporary location and that's, that's where it's being paid for. What I'm saying, that same relocation fee, had we not had to do an interim location and we went up to Corey Hills, would that money have gone against the budget for, for this that we're coming into? Meaning there's money put aside for relocation. I know, this is an important question.
I might call, I can't speculate today.
It may not, it's an important, it's an important portion of the finances of this because quite honestly, you're telling me, don't worry taxpayers of the city of Quincy, we got a bucket of money that you already approved for one project that we're going to relocate you over here. And that's not going to cost the city anything, you know, bait and switch right there.
I'm not saying that.
And then turn, then turn over and then say that same money couldn't have been used for the project that we're moving up to Corey Hills that could benefit this project that we're doing here.
One could submit that it's a $15 million relocation cost, not a $1 million.
No, I'm just saying that we've got a $14 million cost that you'd be coming before us instead of $15 million is what I'm saying. So at the end of the day, we're talking about any way you cut at the animal shelter because there's a million dollars being put over in another location, it's 18.5 total for this.
I would revert back to the portion of the presentation when we spoke to the 18, 20-month delay for the construction of the shelter would cost $7.5 million for the public safety.
Paul, I'm going to go back to the same.
So the expenditure, the $1 million saves $6.5 million.
The same, the same statement is going to be true. In 2017, there was a budget that was brought before us for the animal shelter. It was 7.1. It was cut in half because this board, this, this council, I was not part of this council, decided that that was a lot of money and it wasn't fully baked at that time. Please come back and fully bake this project for us so that we can approve it. And it took six years for you to come back and it's escalated. It's shrunk in size by 20,000 square feet to 14, 14, 900 square feet and it's grown in cost by triple. So it's, it's problematic in that way. Now, the other question that, so I'd like to ask.
The building that was shown at that time was conceptual. It was not fully designed. It is reducing costs for value engineering because of concern for the taxpayers. So it was significantly reduced. The $7 million was reduced to $3.5 million because that building wasn't designed. It was, the council felt it was premature to come. They wanted to see what they were going to fund and that's why they did the $3.5 million.
But it took you six years to come back here.
And that's what gave us the wherewithal to get where we are here tonight.
Six years cost money, Paul. Six years is costing us a lot of money.
I understand that. I fully understand that.
So the ownership is not here on this council. The ownership is with this administration because you weren't able to manage a project that was before you. $3.5 million in 2017 to come back to this body to be able to, to, to discreet, to grease the cost of what was happening has now escalated because it's taken six years to get here. You can blame the pandemic, but the reality of it is, is that this was not a priority for this administration. So I also want to ask a question. These drawings that were brought before us, the construction drawings, the progress that that we were provided, was done in October 2021. This is June of 2022. And, and Counsel Yang also pointed out the fact that the escalations of costs, I had the same question, that the, the hill, the hill basically came in and basically had it as a May of 2021 and the numbers weren't matching up. We also have $100,000 for furniture, fixtures and equipment. And one of the things you quoted for us was that is for refrigerators and technology. But when we get to the, to the back where we actually talk about some of these things for, you said refrigerators, residential grade kitchen appliances. What we have here is refrigerator, double door, refrigerator, commercial refrigerator, under counter, coffee maker, microwave, oven toaster, freezer chest, water, water heavy duty, dryer heavy duty. These are all great things that you have. And then we get down to the FF and E, general office equipment, project-specific vending machine. For $100,000, what are we buying? And who are we buying for? Is this for the animal shelter? Is this for the police? Which one is this for?
Counselor, those examples that we gave about the refrigerator and stuff, I throw out here off the cuff. I wasn't reading the document that you are quoting.
That's fine. I'm pointing it out now.
So my list was not complete. I would submit to you that the city of Quincy is paying to build this animal facility. Which occupants use the individual pieces of equipment, the refrigerator, the toaster, the coffee maker? I can't tell you right now. I do know that they work collaboratively and they overlap functions. It may well be that they all use it.
I'm not saying that I have a problem with any of these things. I've been saying is the $100,000 here that you were saying that that's for. I have a problem with the bottom line cost. It's very, very expensive. I'd like, I'd like to ask a couple of questions to Mr. Gillen if I could in regards to the, the canine. And then I'd like to talk to the architect, if possible.
Thank you, Gillen.
Lieutenant, thank you. Thank you very much. I do appreciate everything that the, that the canine unit does as well. It's, it's, it is an incredible asset to the city of Quincy, to all communities that have them. And quite honestly, they are, they're not just, they're not just, they're, they're police officers. The dogs are actually trained police officers that will put themselves in the line of duty to protect the human that they're working with, which is incredible what that animal will do and what all of our animals can and cannot do. I guess I was just confused because in the animal shelter package that they have, they have three canine units. And you said that you have, it sounds like you have 12. So could you explain to me that?
Sorry, ma'am. To clarify that, those are three training cages or training runs.
Three training cages.
They're not cages, they're, just to clarify, they're six by 10-foot runs. And then if canine officers coming in inclement weather, he can put his canine in that area and the canine can be properly exercised. But in addition to that, if a canine officer goes out of town, they can leave the dog there. And then the canine officers on shift can do the cleaning and the feeding of the dog. That's what those, those three are.
So it's not just for three? I just wanted to clarify because it says, it says in the package, the presentation that, that was presented to us. And I'm, you know, it says for three. I'm looking for the numbers where they tell us that. It basically said for three, but really it could potentially hold up to, it can hold up to more than three. Is that correct?
Yes.
Right here. So it's, it's on the animal shelter.
Those are three exercise crates.
Okay.
And in addition to that, if we needed to, if there was a surge, the animal shelter folks could use those crates.
Yeah. And it's more, it's more the fact that when it's breaking out the animal housing, it basically says canine, three. So it's for three dogs for a total of 80, I think it was 80, 84 animals, cats and dogs. But you're saying that, you know, if a police officer goes out of town, that most of these dogs go home with, is it true?
Yes, most of the canines go home with the handler.
Yeah, so if they go out of town or if they're going on vacation, that the.
Right, they could leave the dog there in a little private kennel.
What do they do now? Just out of curiosity.
They pay for private kenneling.
So those dogs go into a private.
We try to use local kennels. I've gone as far as Worcester to get a kennel. It depends on the dog's temperament.
Yeah.
What type of kennel will take them.
Will take them, yeah. So, well, that's, it's, it's not just canine dogs. There's, bless you, there are other, there's lots of people that have different types of species of dogs that are, you know, if trained correctly, they're perfectly fine dogs. And when not trained correctly, they can be, they can be unfortunately mischaracterized.
Right. That's breeds, that depends on each individual dog. So like our patrol dogs are very protective of their handlers. So we would never use them to do a free airspace search around an individual. That's why we specifically went, we used to have dual patrol narcotics canines, but they're so protective of the handler that we changed that operation. And we went with very friendly, single purpose labs that do close in proximities in searches. So I'm probably getting a little off topic.
That's good. Listen, it's, it's, I saw you get very passionate earlier when you were talking about this, and I can understand that because, you know, it's, the animals are sensitive, we're all sensitive to our animals and how we, it's a, you get very close to them and some people just don't understand how close people are.
Right. And again, I'm just in awe of what Kit and all the volunteers, for them to take their time to, you know, perform this task is really way over the top as being a good citizen.
Yeah. And I think you've all been working really hard for a long time to try to come to a solution for the needs that we have here. So let me ask you, I know that in some cases Homeland Security, Quincy, City of Quincy gets Homeland Security. Does the canine unit get any Homeland Security?
Yes. Nine out of the 12 canines are fully funded, the vehicles, the dogs themselves. An average green dog costs about $9,000. And we've been very successful in using the urban area security initiatives grant to purchase these dogs.
So we get the money to purchase the dogs, but don't get any money to house the dogs, right? So we can't use any of that money?
We do not. Our buy-in, if the federal government's going to kick in the money for the vehicles and the dogs, our match is to feed the dogs and take care of the veterinary bills.
Okay. So we don't get any money for potentially? I'm just trying to see if there's any, not that, not that I'm looking for you to find the pockets of money, but if there's any opportunities for Homeland Security to help, to free the cost of this animal shelter. Potentially not, then. Was there any discussion? The other question I had, and I'm not sure if this is to the architect or to you, how many other animal shelters or how many other communities combine their animal shelters with their canines? Is there any examples of that that we know of?
I don't know of any that do that, but I think the unique relationship we have with QAS, where we, we support them and they support us. Before, we had a large canine unit and trained officers. Again, QAS, we would find a stranded animal and in the middle of the night, in the absence of an animal control officer, again, we'd call Kit or one of the volunteers, meet them in the middle of the night, meet them. I've literally met Kit underneath bridge overpasses with wounded dogs and stuff. And so that relationship we have is very unique to Quincy.
Yeah.
And the puppy Go case showed the commitment of the police department to investigating these type of, you know, animal abuse crimes. And when we have an animal, a problem animal, Kit and animal control officers do a great job preparing the case. The case is ultimately tried by Sergeant Tapper at the police department, so.
I know, we do have a unique, I think it's, it is a unique partnership that we have because I do, I've visited the animal shelter, I've talked to people who volunteer at the animal shelter. And I do know, like, we always, it's funny because you'll say you have a canine person that's on duty, but they can't be on duty 24 hours a day. But that does not mean that an animal doesn't go, doesn't get hit by a car in the middle of the night, doesn't, doesn't, isn't involved in a domestic situation where the dog has to be brought to someplace until something can be settled. So these are the types of things that most people don't take into consideration when we're thinking about animals because we're thinking they're just, you know, family's pets. But there are lots of different situations that happen.
Right. There's a lot of legal implications when we have domestic violence, there's new laws covering what you can do with animals that are involved in those domestic disputes. And again, we rely on the expertise of the volunteers at the animal shelter to help us with these cases. They've actually, we've had cases where those animals were literally, one particular case, those animals were sheltered by QAS and cared for by QAS while the court case was going on for almost a year and a half.
So I appreciate all of the answers that you had. I do, I do get a little concerned. I'm just going to share with my concern, and this is just maybe my own, I may not be right about saying this, but it would be a concern that I have. It's just that we have a dog park. I think it's unique that we'll have a dog park in the animal shelter. I think that's a great, great place to have the two of them together, the canine units as well. But my concern is like that, like mixing all of those different types of potential issues. You might have a dog that comes in, might have a, be sick or, there's a lot of room for different things that could potentially happen. I hope none of those happen. Or, you know, just, just people, your dogs are trained, but sometimes people who come to go to dog parks don't necessarily always have well-trained dogs.
That's a valid concern, but...
Yeah. And I'm trying not to, I'm trying to say that in the most sensitive way because I don't take my dog to, I only have one now because I once passed away, but I don't take my dogs. They're not the most social dogs in the world and you wouldn't want me at the animal dog park with my, with my dog. She would be, she'd think that it's okay for her to be barking and doing things, so.
Well, we like to think that the concept of having the canine unit up near the dog park, it'll help us. These dogs have to be able to work among crowds. We have to put them on ferries. We have to put them on mass transportation systems. So part of their training is to be socialized, so they're not dog aggressive.
I'm not necessarily worried about the, I just think of the mix of different dogs that are, different things that are there. But I appreciate the explanation. I might like to talk to the architect now, if that's possible.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I'm terribly sorry, I missed your name when you came up.
Eric Nelson.
Eric, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
So one of the questions I have is, I did just ask that question about the combination of the canine unit and the, and the animal shelter. It just seems like we're building a new, a new public health, a public safety headquarters. It seems like it would make more sense for it to all be housed in one place, but this is the, this is the direction that the, that you were provided to go into. But one of the questions I have is, this is a large facility and I know that, you worked on the first go-around, right?
Correct.
Okay. And, and the first one was around 20,000 square feet approximately?
That sounds about right.
And we're down to 14,900 square feet?
Correct.
And so, and have you worked in any other communities surrounding here, surrounding the city of Quincy?
We recently completed a study for the Boston Animal Shelter. Where else are we working? We have a project with the city of Milton.
Okay. So the city of Milton, I actually did talk to the city of Milton. I wasn't sure if you were the same architect, though. That's why I was asking.
Yes.
I didn't realize that. So the city of Milton, I know that they, that their project came in around 6,000 square feet?
That's about right.
And it was about $5 million.
Uh huh.
Uh huh. And, and they're a different, unique situation because the city of, the town of Milton is, their animal shelter is being paid for by, it's not being paid by the community, it's being paid for by a donor, I think is paying for the animal shelter. Is that correct?
I'm not sure.
Okay. So, so I talked to the town of Milton today and that's what they told me. So they're in a different situation where they, they can't fund, the town of Milton's not going to fund the animal shelter, but they're being paid for by a donor, a large donor, but they came up with a price and they only have about $2.5 million. And this budget came in over $5.5 million for 6,000 square feet. And they're going back to the drawing board, isn't that correct?
Correct.
And are, so one of the things that they were telling me that they're trying to look into that could potentially save a lot of money might be, what, pardon me?
Prefabricated.
And is that something that we would consider here in Quincy? And the reason why I ask that is that, you know, just today, the Federal Reserve went up by three quarters of a point. And we're headed into a really tricky time. And this is something that I do need to see happen in the city of Quincy, but I can't justify $15 million when we have to be able to be better at what we're doing. And we can't use the excuse of COVID especially, and I can't help but keep going back to this. In 2017, this was a project that was brought before this council and asked to come back. And it's taken us six years. Now, I'm not sure if it was you, the architect, that took six years or if it was the poor management of the administration, but somebody somewhere along the line dropped the boat, ball on this particular project and the escalation of costs has happened and shouldn't be to the taxpayers of the city of Quincy. The town of Milton made a very good point to me, which I have to say, I agree, that they can't justify, and they're not paying for it, but they can't justify the cost of the animal shelter as it's coming in because they need it to be more cost effective because an animal shelter shouldn't cost as, it shouldn't, it shouldn't, shouldn't cost more than it would cost to put a child in a school to educate, but it's an important asset to the community. So they're not saying that it's not important, but what they are saying is they have to tighten their belts to make sure that they can afford that. I don't see that happening here. I see a building that's gone down in size, but tripled in cost, you know? And it's bothersome to me because as we sit here tonight, we're, you know, I need this to happen because I think this is something that needs to happen for this community. This group of people have been waiting since 2017. They did their fundraises. They did the things that they were supposed to do. They have been patient, they have waited and they are asking for this help. But this administration has basically locked the door on them until now, and now they're bringing it up two nights before the end of the year, saying, we have to get going because we want to get this out to bid on August 1st. And they're going to make the council look like the bad guys when in fact, this isn't the council that's the bad guys. We've been asking every year, I have been asking every year for this presentation. There's no reason for the escalation of costs other than the fact that this was not a priority. The Fed announced today that the, the, the interest rates are going up by three quarters of a point. What that means to the people at home isn't just the inflation of cost of gas, the inflation of cost of food that we go shopping in. It means that their credit cards are going to go up. It means that they're, if they don't have fixed loans, those loans are going to go up. It's going to be a pocket hit to the people. And so is this $15 million. So I'm asking, is there a way that we could go back and look at this and make this more cost effective to cut up? We have an atrium when you walk into the building that's two stories high. The second floor doesn't do anything. It's just a, it's a, it's a, it's glass that makes it look very pretty. Is there any way that we can go back to cut the cost in this? Because that's what needs to really happen. $15 million is just not acceptable to the taxpayers of the city of Quincy. You are doing that for the town of Milton. You're not being asked to do that to the city of Quincy. I think this council needs to ask you to go back and do that and you need to tighten your belt and come back with something that we can afford to do. There'll be a temporary location. Is that the right solution for the animal shelter? No, it's not. It should never have happened. But it's not us, the city council, who have done that. It's this administration who has put us in a situation to have to do that. But now it's time for us to actually ask you to go back and do that. You're doing it for the town of Milton. And what I've understood today is that you're very close to getting there, to getting within their budget so that they can afford to have what they need. What's interesting is the city, the town of Milton, the city of Quincy was ahead of the town of Milton when they were talking about doing their animal shelter over in 2017. We were first, we came out of the gate first, we were ahead of them. The gentleman I talked to today basically said, he cannot believe that we're still here and that it's $15 million and that they're going to come in and they're going to get what they need. And they're going to actually get the animal shelter same amount of time, but they're going to get the animal shelter and get it at the cost effectiveness that they needed that. The city of Quincy is not getting that same treatment. And I think we need to actually really look at that. Thank you.
Counsel President DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Hines, Public Buildings Team, I don't know, just, just in general, Lieutenant Gillen, nope, just Sandra, Kit, all the people that came out tonight, thank you for coming in, thank you for your presentation. It's long overdue and we were here at the table tonight. Just a couple of comments and then a couple of questions. Unfortunately, my father-in-law is in the early stages of dementia and he wandered off some 10 minutes out and then called the police. Police got the dog out to the house, smelled some clothing. They found him up at Faxton Park, just sitting out there, no cell phone on him, probably wouldn't have been able to find him. But thank you to the Quincy police and the dog that found him up there, you know? It's sad, he's going through this dementia and he's wandering off, but...
He may have been sitting with my mother.
You know, so, and also the dogs with, you know, kids on, on spectrum that get out, children, seniors, elderly. Just a note on the dog park, my little boy, we bring, the in-laws, our in-laws have the golden doodle, bring him up to the, to the dog park. He loves to open the gate for everybody and think he, you know, that's the dog. But it's well, it's well suited, it's a great location for it. And now we're at the part where the animal shelter is going to be possibly next to it in the same vicinity of area. You know, I was here in 2017 for the vote, five years ago, and it was, it was a different time. I'll be honest with you. Population was different in the city. We were right around 94,000 people the last two years, 2020, we were at 101,636. I could bet you that you did some consensus today. You had about 104,000 people here in the city, probably more. You're looking at 10,000 people probably over the last five years in population. People were very skeptical about right outside here at the Hancock Adams Common some years ago as well. Why do I relate to that? Well, people can see it, people can feel it, people can go and enjoy it. They see what the city can produce. They see what we as a group can do to the city and it's flourishing all over. We've got a lot of projects going on across the city, you know, police station, headquarters, Father Bill's, the animal shelter is the next stage of where we need to get to that next level of the city. You know, just, just thinking about over the years with all the different phases of this, with COVID coming in in March of 2020, it's kind of changed the whole dynamics of a lot of things, put a lot of thing on hold. I know you were saying a little earlier about your construction costs going up from July to May, which is not even a year, a million dollars. Just think about if we kicked the can down the road for this project, how much more it would be down the road. This puts us in a pretty decent position to get the bids in and get the construction in in September and then have this, you know, built out before January of '24. It's kind of a decent timeline. You get into construction before the winter starts to start where some of the area can be really frozen and it puts you on a timeline. As you know, we're going through the Dr. DiChristofaro Special Education Center, which, which, you know, we were on a different timeline, but unfortunately COVID had come in. There was a lot of materials that we couldn't get last year. Lumber is starting to descend in price. Materials are starting to get back together, but, you know, obviously our gas price is at $5. Inflationary rate, interest rates are going up, things are changing. The dollar amount today is totally different five years ago. I mean, as you know, when, when these bids come in, it's changing. I, I thank you for coming in with your energy efficiency because Qcan would have been trying to put us in a position to say, okay, we're going to go green. So thank you for that, Commissioner Hines. Can you anticipate what the project, what this project could look like if you kicked it down the road another year? What, what would happen? Would, would, would this be inflated millions of dollars more? How, how, how can you kind of propose?
If recent history informs that question, then yes. It would be a significant escalation just to build this same building. We learned, an exercise we did in part of the DiChristofaro Center about a redesign to try to, to scale something back. And we ran the numbers and the cost for that redesign and the cost of delaying the implementation of that put us right back to the dollar amount that we started with. And we would have had a lesser building. So by delaying it for, for a redesign, to save some costs and scale it back, we paid the same amount of money because of the delay going through that exercise. So we opted not to follow that exercise. We, we had the professionals, the OPMs, we ran all the numbers and it was illogical to put the period on to scale back, to spend more money for a smaller building.
We had a very similar situation about a month ago with the Pine Hill Cemetery, where that had to be scaled back a lot and it just takes away from so much. But you, the dollar amount has changed, the whole dynamics of money with, you know, with the inflationary note, construction costs, and putting something that's really nice here, the animal shelter, the Quincy Police Animal Control Canine Unit, I mean, just, I mean, it's beautiful. It's a beautiful, you know, and the amenities that people are looking for in the city of our size, if we want to get to that next level, we're going to need something like this. This is something, it's well needed. I look back over the years of meeting Kit and Sandra over at the Broad Street facility. It's, it's in terrible, terrible condition. I've gotten emails and phone calls over the years just about displacement and how terrible the conditions are over there and you've weathered the storm. We're here at the table now, here we are, and, you know, I think it's a much needed project. It's a need for the city of our size. We're talking about Milton's and Wayman's and all these other towns and cities, but we are a city, over 100,000 people and we're climbing. It's a very desirable place. And a lot of folks that kind of questioned how the city could look was, if you can take a stroll out to Kilroy Square in the downtown and saw the evolution of a city of the downtown evolve. And we're, we're still in, I'd say not even 25% of it's done, where we have so much more that we can, we can bring to the city. As you can see, our open space and parks have increased outside, General's Park area, all throughout the city. As we build, we still have to get that open space and provide these amenities that are looking for. I've heard a lot tonight with, with everything over there. I mean, I'm, I'm ready to go here. I'd like to make a motion to approve, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Motion on, approve?
On the motion. Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Hines.
Good evening, Counsel.
I think a lot of people, you know, as I can tell, you know, when we get involved in, folks who have passionate thoughts about different things up here at, at City Hall and they show up for an animal shelter or a golf course or, I know a lot of folks in Ward One who were very passionate about getting seawalls put up. And one of the things I, I try not to do is attack the administration. I know that they have, as Counsel DeBona has said, so many good projects going on in Quincy. Some go ahead of others, some get put back, some get shuffled around. Mr. Hines could probably talk for hours. And I know how hard he's worked on this animal shelter layout. And I think, unless I'm getting this entirely wrong, the vibe from the folks here tonight is that they're very pleased with what they see up on the screen. And they want us to move on it and they don't want us to just, you know, make it half-baked. You know, everything here in Quincy, Quincy High, Central, the police station, as Counsel DeBona said, the Commons out here, possibly a presidential library coming. The administration tries to do everything top-notch, they get behind everything. I, I think this is a beautiful animal shelter as I think of where we are now and what this would be in regards to the dog park. I, I think it gives Lieutenant Gillen what he needs. I think it gives the residents what they need. I know we had mentioned Milton and I know how years ago they had, you know, I think it's off Canton Ave or one of those roads up there, they were in an old farm up there. It was like chicken coops or whatever. I think I, we adopted a dog up there once. And, you know, it might be still up there. I don't, we were talking Milton, I haven't been paying attention that much to Milton. And Wayman, I think, is a little beat up. But Quincy shouldn't be. For what we have and, and, you know, I'm writing down things, we're writing down Broad Street, how Broad Street will be completely renovated when it's done, where the Great Father Bill set up the ability to move that shelter out, the police station, we mentioned the cemetery, I know the fire stations are being looked at, and on and on and on. I don't think there's anything that the administration doesn't look at that they don't go after 110%. And sometimes the numbers are staggering. And sometimes things happen where five or six years go by and it's not done yet and people get frustrated. But again, there's different groups here that they all have their pet projects and want to come up and get them all done. And I think the administration and the council want to see, see everything done. And I think that's what's happening in Quincy when you look at everything. I'm going to second Counsel DeBona's motion. I think that Mr. Hines and company, along with the folks that have, you know, put in hours, would probably comments on the animal shelter and working with Lieutenant Gillen and the architects. And I work with Lieutenant Gillen a lot with a lot of things, and when Bob gets involved with it, again, he wants the best. Um, so I'd like to second the motion, uh, on on the approval of the animal shelter.
Okay. Um, we have a second on the motion. On the motion, I have not spoken yet, and I'm gonna take a minute minute of privilege as as the chair. Uh, thank you, Mr. Hines, Commissioner Hines, it was a great presentation. Um, I also like to thank all the people out in the audience tonight. Uh, I got a lot of emails, got a lot of phone calls, um, and I appreciate the passion and everything that you do to take care of the animals in our city, because I think it's part, it's part of the city. This is part of the city, taking care of, uh, uh, pets and our animals who are less fortunate and need our care. And so I congratulate all the people who work for the animal shelter. I will be voting in favor of this tonight, uh, as as a ward counselor. I have seen the need for this, you know, I've worked with the the police unit, I can guarantee you, Alan Gillen, if there's a grant with Homeland Security, and I used to sit on the board for Quincy's Homeland Security, he, not Alan, I said Alan, you said your brother, oh, God, I'm sorry, you look a lot alike, you know. Um, sorry about that, uh, Lieutenant. Um, but, um, he he's the first one up to make sure we get the grants and we get the money. So I'm sure if there was any chance at any Homeland Security money, uh, I know Lieutenant Gillen would have already got it, because he was very, he's been a very effective, uh, representative for the city of Quincy and getting that money, you know, for the K-9 unit for, but also for both police and fire. And he's done a great job on that committee over the years. So I'm confident that we've exhausted, that this is something we need to do. This is something, I was here as a city councilor when we had the old Dog Pound, and I saw the euthanizing room, and these were not good things. And the animal shelter, I congratulate you, has come along, has brought Quincy to a different phase, a much more humane phase, in taking care of, uh, the people. I know there's been some back and forth, this has not been a, it's been an easy process, it's been up and down, it seems we've gone all around. But I think what I'm seeing is we have consensus, we have a group here, we have something that needs to be done, and I am not in favor of kicking this down the road anymore. I think it's time that we act. I I think it is time that we act as a council and not just send it off to another city council, because I wasn't here for the first time. So instead of kicking it down the road, I realize it is an expense for the taxpayers, but I think it's money well spent.
Does that mean my taxes are going up?
It it could.
Does that mean my taxes are gonna go up?
Yes, it could.
And who's gonna watch out with the spending? This gentleman can't even provide accounting on two point five million. He's gonna let the company?
Okay.
That is not true.
We're gonna, we, we're not, we're under the open meeting law, and you're not in the schedule to speak. We are under the open meeting law, and part of that is they have to be part of the program. So we, I'm gonna throw you out of order. Um, so that concludes my comments. I will, uh, Counsel Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, this is actually a question just to, back to you, and I just want to make sure this is the case. So I, again, I I appreciate, you know, the the comments of my colleagues, um, and I'll reiterate what I had said earlier, that conceptually, this is something that I'm one hundred percent behind. The two questions that I had, my understanding was that this was the first presentation we would get, and so any follow-up questions would be answered prior to taking a vote. Those two questions, I think, for me anyways, are important to ensuring that we are setting this building up for success, right? It's, we see the building in front of us, we understand there's a timeline in place. Um, the questions that I have, one with understanding, you know, what that financial buffer breaks out to, I believe is important to make sure that we are being one hundred and fifty thousand percent thoughtful about anticipating everything that we can, that that buffer is in fact enough, right, to ensure that there will not be any financial delays in this project moving forward, that we do hit that timeline. So I think that for that one question, that's where that's coming from. The second one I have is, um, when I say setting up for success, I also mean not only hitting the timeline, but that then when this building opens, that we are able to understand fully the financial obligations of the city moving forward, to be able to successfully operate this building. And I do want to see a breakout of that to, again, understand what we're going to have to look at moving forward in the budget. Um, just, I want to make sure the resources are there, right? And so without those two pieces of information, I don't feel comfortable moving forward with the vote today. I do want to support this, I just want to see that there is, you know, information in front of us that us and the public can see, okay, financially, we are being, again, thoughtful about making sure that there is a buffer in place to take into consideration, um, anything that might come up, so that we're preventing any financial delays on this. I don't want to see any more delays on this. And the second piece, again, is to make sure that we, um, all know what we're going to offer, not only financially, but again, with staff, like you were saying, Paul, custodial staff, there might be other staff members that might have to be hired into making sure that we can run this animal shelter well, right? Again, the folks here have raised money and done a great job on their own, right? But it should not be just a burden onto them, right? So I just want to understand, and I think they have a right to see as well, what what implications are we gonna have in place moving forward, um, that will be standing obligations to make sure that we can run the shelter, you know, appropriately. So I would like to actually see those two pieces of information, um, before the formal vote of the council. I know the formal vote won't happen anyways until the council meeting, so.
It's only a committee vote.
Correct, this is a committee vote, and does not actually happen until the formal council vote.
It has to be a final vote of the full council.
Correct, right, so I.
This is only a committee vote.
Correct, so just again, I just want to make sure that we have those answers to those two questions for me anyways, right? Just to to know what's happening once the shelter, this, there's two things that need to happen. We need to get the shelter built, right, and and opened, but we also need to make sure to ensure its success. And so that later, you know, point, that second point, those two pieces of information would be helpful for me to make sure that we ensure the success and operation of this building moving forward. So certainly, if we get it before the full, the formal official council vote, that would be really helpful for me. Um, just want to make sure that that, we're gonna get that information.
Well, speaking on the motion, there is a motion on the floor. Would you like to, uh?
Mr. Chairman, as a friendly amendment, we can put that into, um, into, as well as getting that information, but I'd like to continue to approve. Would that be okay with you to?
No, absolutely, I'm just saying, we are going to get, even if a vote takes place tonight, there's a formal vote that still needs to happen at the next council meeting, regardless of what happens here. So I I understand that, you know, regardless of what happens here tonight, the formal vote won't happen, you know, to actually move this forward until our next council meeting, right? So between now and the next council meeting, I just want to make sure that we get that information.
We'll develop that and share it, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
On the motion, Counsel Mahoney.
So I just want to reiterate the fact that this is the first time we're having this presentation, and this presentation has been asked. I've been on the council for five years now, it's my third term, but I've been asking every single year since I've been on this council. And to suggest that if we are to have a discussion or to ask for things, like to come back and see if there's a way that we can bring the costs down, we don't want to wait, because it's gonna cost us more money, the exact same plan, because we've already bid it out. We already bid it out, this is already done deal, it doesn't matter what our votes are up here, it's the votes are done. But here's the thing, here's the thing that really is bothersome. I'm sorry, we are the city of Quincy. Milton is going back and looking to find ways to cut costs, to give them the same thing, a shelter, but to give them state-of-the-art shelter, just not over the top. And I know that the animal shelter and the people that are here deserve to have those things, but the taxpayers also deserve to have due diligence done to make sure that we're giving both, that you're getting what you all need, but the taxpayers are also getting the best, best for what we can afford to do. And I so want to say yes to this, because I do believe in the animal shelter, I believe that we need to have this. But I didn't put us in this situation, and to suggest that, oh, my gosh, the administration does everything, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say anything bad about the administration, because, you know, there might be a job for me down the road, that's some of my other colleagues. But here's the deal, the deal is that we're here and we're voted into to take care of the taxpayers of the city of Quincy and to make sure that we're doing the best job that we can do, and that does mean questioning. So it's a strong mayor, weak council, but we're only as weak as the questions that we ask, and we're supposed to ask questions to make sure that we're getting the best project for the taxpayers of the city of Quincy and the best project for all of you too. You've waited six years for this project, I didn't make you wait six years, this administration made you wait six years. I'm not getting the answers that I need to ma- have so that I can make a solid decision. I'm not even being entertained by that, because we have a motion to approve to move it ahead. It's the second to last meeting, the last meeting is on the twenty, twenty-first next week. So we're not gonna have any more conversations. So the taxpayers are the one who loses here. So thank you very much. I do, I have, you know, the whole issue of the green roof too, I guarantee that that's gonna have a problem in about five years that will be come back to having to fix, because those things don't usually work when you have people underneath them. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, um, to approve the, uh, the the amount for the animal shelter. Um, the clerk will read the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBarna.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
President.
Counsel Mahoney.
No.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Chairman Phelan.
Yes.
Four members.
Four members, uh, one against, one one abstention.
It's an office of the Assembly.
One abstention.
Yep.
Um, so the motion has has been report, has been reported out of committee, it will be then taken up at our regular meeting Monday, Monday night, at the end of the meeting when we bring this out for a final vote of the council, Tuesday night. Tuesday night, Monday's a holiday, so we'll be on Tuesday. So, um, so I thank everyone for attending, uh, we're gonna be moving on to other items on the agenda. So if you wish to stay, we'd love to have you, but we'll be moving on to other items on the agenda.
Thank you, members of the committee.
Okay. Um, we're gonna give a moment of brief recess, and then we'll be coming right back to the council meeting to give. Okay, um, the Finance Committee of the City Council is back in session. At this time, I'd like to take the, the, um, the seven million dollar item for public buildings out of order, since we have all the people here right now, and, um, and get a presentat-
Did you say?
Yeah. What's that? Okay, um, Commissioner Hines, on the seven million dollars for public buildings.
Good evening, Finance Committee members, again. Um, thank you for attention to this one. It's been several years since we've been before you from the Department of Public Buildings for CIP financing. Um, I am happy to report, over the last two allocations of CIP financing, nearly every job is complete, um, with the exception of the renovation of the Richardson Building at Thomas Crane Public Library, uh, and the reasons for that being, uh, the flooding of the Broad Meadows Middle School. That was two million dollars that got captured to get that building back online for the educational program of the of the students there. Um, the other items that did not get done are roofing replacements, door replacements, and window replacements at several of the firehouses. Um, and the reason that wasn't done was through an agreement with the members of the firefighters' union and the administration and the the then-chief of the Fire Department, um, because the council did in its wisdom appropriate money for the purchase of extractors for the firefighters' turnout gear, uh, for reasons of trying to prevent cancer among the firefighters. And going into the stations to look, to re, to, uh, to locate the installation of those extractors, when they arrived, I took a step back and I said, well, the extractors are well and good, but if they're sitting around in the living quarters, unshowered, waiting their turn to take the shower and the one or two showers in the building, they still have the chemicals, they still have all that on their person, it's not, not a good situation. They're still subject and still vulnerable to the cancers. Um, so we came to an understanding and agreement that we would build shower rooms and a bathroom proximate to each truck bay. So when they return to a station after a call where there's contamination or otherwise, um, they can right there, they they take off the turnout gear at at the hazardous situation, they go into plastic bags, they get into the fire station, that gear goes into the extractors, whether it's the new ones that are installed or the old ones that are still working, um, and go right into a bathroom that's right there proximate to them, they don't have to go through the living space and take showers and get cleaned up right there without going into the living space and contaminate the the living space. So those shower rooms weren't part of those original CIP requests, so we did repurpose those monies with the assent of the unions to do that. So with the exception of those projects, I'm not unaware of any CIP request that's not, uh, fully constructed and done, uh, and those funds are fully expended. So what we have before you tonight is our next request, uh, and it is for seven million dollars. Uh, it's less than we had hoped for, it, uh, it it gets a number of projects done, but it does not meet the need of the Public Buildings Department, uh, which we'll address in in future time with you. These projects here rose to the top in necessity, uh, for various reasons. North Quincy High School, the boiler room, a one million dollar, uh, rebuild of the entire boiler room, uh, the pricing estimate that's with you is nine hundred and something. Uh, the escalation here is for design. Because of the cost of that, it has to be designed and bid independently of our other contracts, uh, so that's one million dollars alone. The Clifford Marshall Elementary School, uh, one boiler failed last summer, another boiler there failed, um, during the school year, I believe it was back in April. Uh, so we had to finish out the school year with a mobile boiler in a trailer in the parking lot tied into that building system. Uh, it, those boilers failed rather precipitously, uh, and they're not all that old, uh, they're they're new to the building, but it's, you know, it's about a twenty, twenty-two-year building, something like that. Um, but unfortunately, the boilers and the equipment that are done today, the high-efficiency equipment that were required to install, are no longer those heavy durable, uh, elements that they used to be. When we tore down the Sterling Middle School, we ripped out the original boiler, a hundred year old boiler in that building. Uh, it went from burning coal, it was converted to burning oil, it was converted to burning gas, but it was the same boiler. Opposite of that, Quincy High School, which is ten, twelve years old, depending on what section you're talking about, we have already replaced every single boiler and every single water heater in that building, because they're, these units are almost like appliances now, they're no longer designed to last that long term. Um, so the Clifford Marshall, we we crippled along with one, and then the second failed. So currently, that boiler was being demolished, because there is no option but for to replace those those boilers. Point Webster, uh, they have three boilers that failed and we need to replace, um, where it's the point that we can still heat that building, but it's any day now that that, uh, that plant goes down. So we're anticipating that, appropriating the money now so that we can get those done. Main Library, Thomas Crane Main Library, the CBT Wing, same thing, this doesn't affect the Richardson Building, but the large addition built in, yeah, two thousand or so, uh, those, both boilers are bleeding out on the floor, uh, and are near end of life and failure. Quincy Police Headquarters, uh, same story, we're only gonna replace one boiler there. We are able to heat the building with the one boiler, we don't want to put the money in to do all of the boilers, because of course we're taking the building down. Um, but I liken this one to the Sterling Middle School analogy that I gave to Counsel Palmucci at that time, um, when I said, I hate putting money into the Sterling Middle School, I know I'm gonna tear it down next year, but I have to keep it running, I have to keep it safe. It's the same situation here with the police headquarters, we have to keep it running for another couple of years. Quincy High School, and the Quincy High School gym is unique from our other gyms in our inventory, uh, because it's more than two stories tall, and the stratification or the the rise of the hot air to the second level makes that track that's suspended at the second floor level and the access to all those classrooms on that level extremely hot, because the heat's rising up. So to set the temperature for the floor of the gymnasium overheats the upper spaces. So Principal Tagliani has been asking for a number of years now, uh, and we've been able to design and spec, a ventilation fans, the lodge, it's funny, the company calls them big-ass fans, that is the name of these fans, to put up in the upper levels of the gymnasium to cause the de-stratification of the of the air and circulate that air. It will save us on energy costs and also make that second level and the first level much more comfortable for use. The next series of the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven items are firehouse-related. Um, we have spent an inordinate amount of time and money on the schools, uh, we've been working in the fire stations, but with not full funding to do these shower rooms. So by and large, this finishes up this funding request, finishes up the funding request, uh, finishes up the construction of those shower rooms I earlier described in these fire stations, and will then allow us to put in, in those ones we haven't yet built or haven't yet installed, we can then install the permanent new extractors. Uh, in addition, Engine One, North Quincy, uh, it's a nineteen sixty, I believe, era building, there was work done by Honeywell, uh, for a new window wall system, which is leaking down into the living quarters, into the kitchen, onto the truck bays, on the trucks, the building leaks. Uh, it's causing, uh, climate issues within the building, um, and damage to it. So what this details, and I have the construction documents, is the replacement of those second floor, the white window walls that you see, they're all plywood and vinyl windows, complete replacement of that structure, and then new roofs on this building. That's the six hundred and ten thousand dollar for Engine Two. Engine Six in Howes Neck, in addition to the showers, that that building needs a lot of work. There's a lot of masonry damage there for years of freeze thaw cycles, cracking, delamination of bricks, in addition to the roofs leaking, both the slate roof area and the flat roof area. The gutters are gone, the downspouts are gone, so there's a a good bit of work to be done at the Howes Neck Fire Station, uh, and our cost estimate's coming in a million dollars for the totality of that work. The North Quincy Thomas Crane Public Library, as everybody knows, at this point was closed for an extended period because it closed unexpectedly, unexpectedly on the spot due to a roof leak and an asbestos sealing, uh, partial failure and release. So after the, uh, the close down of the building, at that time with no plans for renovation and no funding in place, uh, put us behind the eight ball in that, and then, yes, COVID did hit and caused a nightmare for that renovation. Building wasn't open, it would have been great to have it completely finished during the COVID period, that was not possible, the availability of windows and other reasons, uh, but this eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars finishes, um, the payments on the renovation, the complete renovation of the Thomas Crane North Quincy Library, including new HVAC system, including complete ADA access, and new furniture, new book stacks, so that they would be ADA compliant, uh, and all new interior finishes, and an elevator and elevator. new interior finishes, and an elevator, an ADA-compliant elevator to the upper and lower mezzanine levels. Our elevators, obviously they're highly regulated with the state, they, every year or two, throw some new regulations at us. Buckley Elevator, our consultant, who has gone in and done an assessment of all of the buildings, has recommended a number of upgrades. I selected most of them. At this point, I'm going to forego the upgrade to the freight elevator at North Quincy High School, but do the work on the passenger elevator. And the last one is the Broad Meadows Middle School. As part of the vulnerability and sustainability and preparedness work we did there, there was a very large portion of asbestos abatement to get off the pipes and off the steam pipes and the boilers and all of that stuff. So you did appropriate, I believe it was $3 million or $4 million at that time, to do that work. Impacted by that work was the auditorium ceiling. It's a 1956 building, I believe. That entire ceiling was asbestos, it was water damaged, and it had to come out to get the HVAC components that were above it. So at that time, the decision was made, well, the building was unoccupied and tented and ready for the abatement of the rest of the asbestos to take that ceiling down. So with some funding from the mayor and some funding from the Federal relief, we advanced a great deal of the renovation of that auditorium. The room itself is 100% complete, it's beautiful, it's 21st century, it rivals the Southwest Middle School auditorium in features and appearance, but at this point in time, it has no seats, it has no stage lights, it has no sound system, it has no stage curtains. So in order to complete the renovation and make that room usable for the students of Broad Meadows, we're asking for that $620,000. So there is backup information for all of the projects there, other than the shower rooms and the fire stations. The figures for those projects came from our own personal knowledge, from the stations that we've already done. The scale of them, we did the larger ones with the ladder trucks, where there's more personnel and more showers needed. We rolled into these projects, an independent project that was under the old CIPs, which was supporting the truck bay floors to hold the heavier apparatus that we have now. So the buildings where we're building the showers, in the basement, at the request of the house personnel, for instance, West Quincy, that involved taking up a concrete floor, putting in footings, putting in steel columns, and then designing the bathrooms around that infrastructure, the support of the truck base. So we have a good running history, we know the cost for the plumbing, we know the cost for the tile, we know the cost for the CMU block, and these projects are done collaboratively within-house labor and our outsourcing, our masonry vendors and our plumbers. So I provided these figures based upon my understanding, my knowledge, and my now developed professional opinion of these projects.
Counselor McCarthy, and then Counselor Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Hines again. It is kind of shocking when you see Clifford Marshall and Point Webster and Quincy High, and we talk about boilers failing, where, you know, we lived with, I know boilers that were like, I don't know how old, Paul, and some of the buildings, you know, Point, and I know Clifford Marshall was brand-new, and Quincy High, and the old Quincy High had stopped, you know, lasted for 100 years plus, so that surprises me, but I know what you say, they don't, they don't make a light bulb like they used to either. It seems like they go out pretty fast still. Zeroing in on that fire station, shower room construction. So some of the guys have mentioned to me that they had new extractors, washing machines, heavy-duty for their material, and you give me a, I'd like to get it again, just a quick rundown, and I just wanted to make sure that, because I want to make sure that, do you deal with the firefighters? You know, you have to do a workaround at the station, right? So I just want to kind of want to go through that, because maybe there's a disconnect there.
Well, anytime we're going to propose to go into one of the buildings, we do obviously speak to the fire chief and the deputy chiefs and the house captain and the house personnel, because it does impact all of their operations, both their day-to-day living, but obviously their emergency response as well. The Engine 1 Headquarters, that shower room is done, the new extractor equipment is installed, the bathrooms, it's 100%. Engine 2, North Quincy, the other ladder truck down there, it's 100%, the new extractors are in. One of the things too, because we're adding all these showers and adding these extractors, we've had to increase the capacity of their hot water, the domestic hot water heating systems, another layer of complication, but we've done it. So North Quincy is 100%. West Quincy, the same thing, we did the domestic hot water heating increase, we did the structural support of the floor, the shower room is 100%, the extractors are in, that room's done, it's punchless, they need mirrors on the wall and soap dispensers type like that. We have now moved on to both Engine 6 at Howes Neck and Engine 3 at Quincy Point. We've gone in ahead of the construction team, moved pipes, moved electric infrastructure, the other things that are in the way of the build-out of the shower rooms. The design on the structural support of Quincy Point, Engine 3, is done. That floor is cut up in anticipation of doing that work. With Jim Smith, who's taken on in that new position we discussed at the budget hearings, it's been very, very helpful. It's not falling on me to do the designs and the oversight and the project management. Jim has been very instrumental in helping me to advance those two buildings simultaneously and get them going, what otherwise would probably be doing one after the other rather than two at once. So it does help to get that job done, and that job does need to be done. They've been waiting, they are owed it, you know, they put their lives up for us, we need to do it for them, and that's why I prioritize them here. As far as the extractors that were purchased, those ones I mentioned are in, the new ones are in and installed. I'm not aware of any building without a working extractor at this point, where there'd be a new one that was temporarily installed, or more likely, the old ones, which is still functional and still connected. I will put the word out tomorrow to the chief, and if there's any building that there's not a working extractor or not adequately working extractor, we will install a new one in a temporary relocation. We did that at West Quincy.
Yeah, and I'm looking at them all, but of course, I'm thinking of Ward 1 with the neck and Germantown, and I don't know, I'd start with, if you could, start with those two, because it sounds to me as though what they have isn't working well. When we're talking about extractors, we're talking about, they put the entire, the fire, the heavy-duty coats, the heavy-duty pants, everything in this thing, and it handles it.
Yep, it's the turnout gear.
Yeah, so I'm.
Fire retardant canvas clothing, yeah.
Yeah, if you could just follow back on, I guess, the connection with the fire guys, I think what's happening too is, the police station's going up, you know, we're going to get that rolling, and tonight, there was a great presentation on the animal shelter, and I know that the animal shelter has some nice washing machines in there and everything look clean, and dogs are going to be taken care of, and I know that the firefighters would like to get taken care of too, and I know that they deal in that world of toxics and the word cancer comes up every once in a while to make sure that whatever they're in the middle of, they get themselves completely sanitized, but it sounded like there's a disconnect a little bit with those two stations. I can't speak for the other ones, but it'd be a good drill to kind of take a look, because I know that, I think it's been a couple of years since they received their new extractors at the stations in Ward 1. And I know, again, as I said during the animal shelter conversation, there's a lot of projects going on, a lot of good projects, so, but if you could look at that, because I.
It's a priority.
I'd love to see that, I know it's on a priority list, but maybe jump to the top of the priority list if we could, to take care of that and put that behind us.
Yeah, I'll speak with Chief Jackson tomorrow and get the lowdown on that.
Thanks, Paul.
And if we have to install, again, install the new ones temporarily and then relocate in any place that they're not working, that's what we will do.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Yang.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner. I'm actually just going to riff off of my colleague, Counsel McCarthy, about priorities, right? There's nothing in this list that I think shouldn't or can't be done, right? I absolutely do, but, and I think I've spoken to you about this sort of offline, one-on-one, that my biggest and frankly, only concern is capacity, right? These are things that we all want to see done, again, there are priorities obviously in different wards as well, and I think depending on who you are, right? If you're a member of the animal shelter, if you're a member of the schools, right? And you're a student in the schools, or you're a firefighter, whatever it may be, right? These items are all priorities, right? There are only so many hours in a day, you've spent quite a bit of time already with us tonight, and so, I know that when we were talking during budget hearings, that you are bringing on a project manager, which, great, I'm glad to hear that. I do still, though, go into that with, what is it, like cautious optimism essentially, right? Because I was excited to see when the request came through to update the firehouses, that that was going to happen, because we had the opportunity to go into some of these firehouses and see the condition that these men and women were operating in, and it's not okay, right? I mean, these are essentially their second homes, you know, and they're there overnight, quite a few hours a day, and they're going out on their own. I remember some folks had explained that they're just going to Home Depot themselves, right, and just being proactive. But I'm not saying, look, because you weren't doing it, I'm just saying, they just proactively were like, hey, I see something that needs to be fixed, and these folks were, you know, folks who are doers, and they're going to go to Home Depot and grab some paint and paint something that needs to get painted, right, and clean things up, but.
They build out rooms or whatever they want, yeah.
Yeah, they're great, right? So again, I do appreciate seeing these requests come in front of us. I do believe that they are all priorities. For me, it's a matter of capacity and making sure that we are sticking to timelines and getting things done in the time that they are, because, you know, that impacts also the requests that come in front of us, right? And in early discussions this evening too, it does also impact costs. So all of that being said, that drives, you know, the question that I have for you, which is, you know, if it's possible for either you or your new project manager, I would like to see for these requests in front of us, if you could present us with a timeline that has benchmarks along the way. I think that's the best thing to do, right? To say sort of overall, okay, we want, you know, these items to be done by this month and that year, whatever, and be great, but I think it's also more helpful for me to actually see that overall timeline broken out into benchmarks. You know, by this date, we want to make sure that we have supplies on site. By this date, I want to make sure that we have funding in hand, whatever it may be, I just, I would like to see those dates, because I just want to make sure that we're staying on track, again, that folks are expecting, you know, hey, if the funding's approved, great, now we can move forward and get these fixes, right? Like, the library, the North Quincy Library, for example, okay? We all thought that was going to be done in a certain amount of time, it wasn't. Again, there are, I completely understand, unanticipated delays on things. It's as if we have control over setting fair and right expectations, that would be the most helpful for me, right? Because, again, when I look at this and I can stand behind a financing request, because I know, hey, that library's going to get done, hey, these firehouses will get done, right? I feel great about that. And then when it comes back and there are delays, and folks who operate in these spaces, who, you know, these are priorities for them, are coming and saying, hey, you told us, right? This was going to get done, it still hasn't gotten done, years later, it still hasn't gotten done. I mean, nobody wants to hear that, I know you don't want to say, I know you are a stickler for this as well, so I know that you share in those frustrations, and again, it would certainly be helpful for me, again, whether it's you or the new project manager, to provide timelines for these items here in front of us, that have benchmarks along the way as well. It just helps to manage expectations, I believe. And the second request I would have is just for any, and I don't know, Susan, if this is something that I can and should be working with you on, is looking at capital improvement requests specifically for public buildings, and public buildings, updates or, you know, projects, if we can see a breakdown of that to date, and which ones are still in progress right now, and when we anticipate those will be done. Again, for me, Commissioner, I know this is important work, and I know that you want to get all of this done, you know, with a snap of finger if possible, right? But if we can all just be on the same page, ourselves, you, residents, people who operate in these spaces and these buildings, if we could all get on the same page for timelines, expectations, benchmarks, communication's key here, so those are my comments and my two requests. If we can get those pieces of information, it'd be really helpful for me to communicate that out to folks who are asking, hey, where are we on this? And, oh, hey, you all just approved, or maybe, I support this anyway, that's where that's coming from, right? Fixing these in the schools and these new improvements to the firehouses, great, when is that going to happen? Those timelines and those benchmarks would be really helpful for me.
Sure.
Thank you, thank you for your work. I know, again, it's a lot, the larger the city gets and the more improvements we see, you're sort of doing like a little bit of both, right? You're doing all the new projects that are coming online, but you're also improving the existing buildings as well, so it's really, you know, two things that you're managing here. I just, again, communicating timeline and expectations is really important for me here.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Clerk of Committees is going to make notes on that, so any questions we'll have for the next councilman. She's going to do that, and now we have Counselor Mahoney.
Thank you. So that's kind of, I'm going to jump on Counselor Yang, because I was going to ask something very similar, which was for project timelines. I know that for the schools, you're typically trying to get this money approved, because they're the things you're trying to get done this summer, correct?
Correct.
And the headquarters, you obviously have to have that done before.
I'm sorry, I can't.
The police headquarters, you're hoping to have that done probably before the heat, anything with heating you're hoping to have done before the fall?
Well, I can tell you at this point, North Quincy High School boiler room isn't going to happen until next summer. It has to be designed and bid, so that's one off. The other, Clifford Marshall, Point Webster, the library and the headquarters. Well, Clifford Marshall, right now, we cannot heat come October, so that absolutely will be number one priority this, the day after this is approved, hopefully. And the other buildings are not far behind it, they're crippling along and could fail at any minute, so they're in-kind replacements of boilers, the whole room doesn't have to be designed, it's not plug-and-play, but it's in-kind, it's light-kind exchange, it's easier to do. For instance, we did one mid-season, mid-winter this year at Snug Harbor. We had a boiler fail, we couldn't heat the building, and within two weeks, the new one was in. So there is that urgency, but they are behind Clifford Marshall.
And is that, are any of these things that we can use Opera money for? Just curious. I know you said that, I think you said the North Quincy, it sounds like you said the North Quincy Library or something that you were using Opera money for, or maybe it's the completion of Broad Meadows Middle School. Was there any, and I know that they, the schools have, I forget what it's called, for the schools, but they have a different funding.
Yes, right. So, you know, Broad Meadows, the auditorium at this point was advanced with those funds?
Mm-hmm.
I'll call it the COVID money, it's how many stimulus programs, I don't even know.
Is it ESTRA funds? Is it that, something, something to that? I don't remember what it stands for. ESTRA funds, sorry.
Unless Mr. Drysdale.
Yeah, so is that where, is that, so for the schools, for the schools, we're using the COVID money targeted at the Quincy Public Schools?
Perspectively, I don't know, but I could tell you, historically, Broad Meadows was advanced to this point with COVID money for everything that was qualified. The seats, the lighting, the sound system, and the curtains do not qualify.
Okay. And do we have a budget for that? Because prior to, I think prior to COVID, we approved in a CIP the restoration of the Broad Meadows.
No, the demolition, that ceiling was an in-the-field decision, because of the cost savings of doing it, while the rest of the building was already tented or contained for the asbestos removal. We would have had to pay all those costs the second time to come in and do that once.
So that's why, so that's why the finishing of Broad Meadows.
I'm sorry, I cannot hear.
That's why the finishing of Broad Meadows Middle School was, it wasn't part of the CIP, the original CIP, yes?
It was not part of that.
Okay. So is there any other places that, so these are all things that some of the COVID monies have been used for. Would there be any way you could identify which, if any, of the line items that you use, that you might have used some of the COVID money? That would be very helpful, and then what the full cost was? Because the backup, the only, this is, again, I'm a stickler for details, this is the presentation we received, right? A list of your projects.
Yes, and the materials that are intended to it.
And a package, right? But the package doesn't match, you kind of have to, it's impossible for me to match some of the stuff here, but like, I'm not quite sure what this is, but it's an email, "North Quincy Public Library. Sorry for the delay, I'm having to go through eight inches of paperwork, rough numbers. Total ACK cost to date, $1,007,000. Paid to date, $1,072,000. Balance, $708,000. I estimate another $100,000. I think the budget given back to us was 2.2." So that gives me 808, and I'm looking, and you have $850,000, I think, for this. I'm not positive, because there's no tie out to your backup.
The 850 is an outstanding invoice and $100,000 to finish the front room. The rest of that project was done with COVID money.
So if it's an outstanding invoice, and you had 2.2, and it was paid to date, and your balance is $700,000, I guess, and you said the rest of it was paid with COVID money, so the 2.2 was for COVID money?
They, I don't have that in front of me, but I actually do.
It's your package?
I do, I do, yep.
You don't have the package you gave us in front of you?
I do.
Okay, just checking. Because I just got the package tonight, so.
So again, I can, without even finding it, represent to you that to date, that project was done with COVID money, exclusively with COVID money, unless I'm mistaken.
Okay. So these things would be really helpful for us, at least for myself, I can't speak for the rest of the council room, speaking I statements, this would be helpful for me. I would like to know if we have spent COVID money, what we spent it on. I mean, I know that Counselor Andronico had asked for a presentation for this, but this is like, you know, we're bobbing for apples and we don't know where we're getting the money, and you're coming up and asking for $7 million more, and this is the presentation. And I'm not meaning to knock your presentation, Paul, but for me to be able to piece it together, I'm having to do, like, the next pieces, Folsom. together, I'm having to do, like, the next, the next piece is Folsom Concrete Masonary excavation doesn't add up to anything that I, that I can kind of, I can't figure out what that adds up to. And then, big ass fans, Walter McDonald.
That's the Quincy High School.
I like that, big ass fans. That's what, that's, that's what it says. It says $70,000 for that. And I think that's for your
The Quincy High Gymnasium.
Which is coming in at ninety, the total cost 95 because they're no longer producing the, the fans. So this package, I mean, we're having to piece everything together to figure out, A, what your costs are going to be. And then you're saying some of it's going to be potentially bid out, some of it's going to be something we do in-house. It would be really helpful to know which ones that are 100% going to be, you know, your team working on it, or who are we, who are, is it cost that we're doing? This is, this is really, I know you talked about this at the budget, that you, that you do project management for all these projects, but the way you're presenting this to us tonight is backup pieces of paper with invoices that don't tie out to the numbers, than the numbers that you're saying in some situations, they're over, they're overages for projects that you've done or don't get, are not counted in COVID money in some situations. So it's really hard to tie them back and forth. And I'm just
If I can.
Yep.
I would disagree that they don't tie in. There's projects set up are represented on this list that show estimates to do the work.
Yeah, no.
Specifically, the North Quincy Library ones. One, the contractor states what is outstanding and owed to him or them. And then there's a John Fulsham estimate to do additional work.
Yeah.
That's what is in North Quincy.
They don't tie up.
The only ones that'll be in a hybrid done in-house and with contractors, as I said earlier, are the firehouse ones, the shower rooms, the roof and the masonry on the fire stations are 100% contractor. Broad Meadows is contractor, the elevators are contractors, the North Quincy boilers and all the other boilers are contractors.
So the elevators that are contracted, and the elevators that say it's 150,000, I'm looking at the elevators, and it says modernization budget.
Again, there's a menu of projects priced out, represented and priced out by Buckley Elevator, our contractor who does our service and upgrades on our elevators. And they gave a long list or menu of work to be done. And as I've represented earlier, I chose which ones we're going to advance at this time.
Which ones are there? I'm sorry. I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
I, I did not represent which ones at this time. I did say that I was, chose not to do the freight elevator at North Quincy High School. And I believe that was the difference between the totality of their proposal and what I am proposing to do.
Okay. So you're saying various elevators, 150,000, correct? Is that your budget?
So, and again, as far as the, the COVID money, my
Is that the budget, is that your budget?
My reference to COVID money is monies that have already been expended.
Okay.
These prices here, anything that's here, the Broad Meadows and other things that in the library with COVID money was expended, the same thing as the showers at various stations. We did what we could, which qualified.
Yeah.
And this, like the finishing of the Broad Meadows Auditorium does not qualify.
I got that. I got, I got that. So what you would have been nice to do is kind of have a column that says, this is what we've done to date. This is the expenses that were spent and we expect.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
This is the money that's been spent. A column could have been, the money expended to date, where'd you get the funds from COVID? This is the extended, the extenuating additional work that needs to be done. This is what we're looking to fund. Because you're coming up here saying, we got this work done, we got something done. And then you're talking about the elevator survey recommendations, and you're telling me that everything's here and it should tie out. You have various buildings for elevator upgrades for 150,000, correct?
Correct.
And then in this, in this backup that you gave to me, that you said you're not doing all of them, how am I supposed to know which, which ones you're doing? Because if you do City Hall Annex, it's 200,000. If you do Lincoln Hancock, I think it's 240. Parker School, 20. So I, I don't know which ones you're doing. It would be nice to know which ones you're doing for the 150 for us to tick and tie back and forth. No, expectations, this is what I'm trying to get at. There's a list of them. You're not doing all of them.
Correct.
You're telling us that you need 150,000 to do some of them, but we don't know which ones you're doing.
Okay.
And this is our backup. So what I'm looking for is what are we doing?
All right. So for the purposes of this conversation, I can give you a generalization, and then I can give you specificity after the fact.
Okay.
For a 150,000 ask, I'm not doing the 200,000 modernization at City Hall.
I figured that.
I'm not doing the 240,000 modernization at Lincoln Hancock.
Yeah, I figured that.
So there's several of them. The Chalmers Crane Library, that would be. The repairs to the Lincoln Hancock, that would be. The repairs to City Hall, that would be.
Okay. So I'm going to, I'm just going to, I'm going to ask you to send that to us afterwards. Do you understand why I'm asking this question? Because you're giving me a number of 150.
I understand why you're asking. I'm trying to answer them.
Yeah, you're giving me a pack up of packages. And I don't know, I do like to read this stuff. And I was trying to, I was literally trying to tie things together to say, oh, okay, so that's what this is. Oh, that's what that is. But it's very hard to do, Paul. And this is your presentation, asking the city council to approve 7 million for work that has to be done in the city.
I understand why I'm here. You asked a question I would like to answer in.
It's
I can tell you by and large, within the 150,000 on the Buckley estimate, I've included the, the repairs and the, the repairs and immediate needs. I'm not doing the modernizations. That's a whole nother chunk of money. I would never pay to modernize the Lincoln Hancock. One, it's too small. We need a new elevator there.
Again.
New shaft. So this is the maintenance and the, and the code upgrade work, not the modernizations.
Paul.
But I will detail that. I will distribute it.
Okay. It should be distributed tonight.
But in an effort to be as forthcoming tonight as I can.
It should be distributed tonight if we're going to approve this budget. It should be, it should not just be handed to us with copies of emails and copies of things. It should be able to tie things back into your, if you're going to give me this package, I should be able to tie it into what you're doing.
I can.
You can.
Yes.
But I can't.
Okay.
And you're handing it to me as backup. The point of backup is that I should be able to tie it up.
I will supplement it for you and distribute it.
This, this presentation is just really, this is the best that we can do. This is the worst presentation I've ever seen. So
There are professional pricing quotes for the fire department work.
They might be professional pricing quotes.
There's professional fire department quotes for what's being bid. There's professional
I'll be happy to pass this off to the press and let's, let them figure out which ones you're doing. So, and this is the backup they're giving. The taxpayers in City Quincy should be able to, I should be able to tell people what it is, what we're getting. This is the package you gave to me. You are the department head. I'm asking for that.
I felt it was clear. I was unaware you wouldn't be able to tie it together. Again, I would be happy to supplement it and send it to you.
Yeah, you're going to have to because nobody can tie, not one person at the city council can tie this together because you can't add it up because you're, it's in your head and it's not on ours. You just handed us backup. And this is the presentation that this administration allowed to come before the city council. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
All right. Any other councils? Seeing none. Yes. Council McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Broad Meadows, the auditorium. I know it's on the list here. Completion, most of the replacement of, of the chairs, I, I know it was, it took a beating a few years ago. I just wondering where, where we're at with that in regards to what was left.
The room is 100% complete. It's beautiful. It's modern, it's clean, it's bright, energy efficient. We are ready for the installation of the stairs, of the, excuse me, of the chairs. We don't have them. They're not COVID qualified. We're ready for the curtains. They're not COVID qualified. We're ready for the stage lighting. Not COVID qualified. We're ready for the sound system. Not COVID qualified. This appropriation, this request covers 100% completion of all those systems, puts that room back online, fully, 100%, 21st century auditorium.
Okay. You're saying COVID qualified?
Not COVID qualified.
Not COVID qualified?
The, the chairs, the curtains, the lights and the sound system, we could not cover with COVID money. The rest of the room, we did.
Oh, okay. You're talking to the dollars.
In vain, I believe.
No, you're talking to the dollars, the COVID. I, I understand how.
Yeah.
I thought you had to put a mask on something or some form, you know? Thank you.
Okay. Any other councils? We have a, we have some information that has been requested. So let's, if we can have that by, by next Monday, is that possible?
Yeah, I'll try it for Friday, but
Friday would be better that we get it, so people have a chance to digest it and look over the weekend. Okay. Moving on to the next item on the agenda that will remain in committee. I believe we have 3 million for our vehicles. And I'm going to turn it over to Chris Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you tonight is a modest vehicle replacement plan for this coming year, but it's substantial in one way. It represents the first hopeful implementation of electric transition for our vehicle fleet. In front of you tonight, you have a electric vehicle assessment study conducted by our team together with National Grid. And I do want to thank our energy manager, Shelley Dean, who over the last year has put in a tremendous amount of work on electrification policies. You have that study. You also have, I know it's tough to read on hard copy. It's a little bit better if you can look at it on your own computer screen. Just the raw data assessment that shows the replacement potential for well over 100, 100 or so vehicles. And it's, it's the raw data. It's not gospel, but it basically indicative of the work that went into studying the fleet, figuring out what vehicles maybe have potential for electrification, which ones currently don't, and draws something of a roadmap going forward for the city. The key piece for this request is the spreadsheet that you can see listing city department, a number of different vehicles, and a sort of a color-coded graph showing electric potential. Just going through this list quite briefly, the biggest priority here for the EV transition is school buses. Through the work of Shelley Dean, we have been awarded grant money from the Environmental Protection Agency to subsidize the purchase of electric school buses. There is still a lot of work that needs to go into that, but we're confident that we're going to be able to make our first purchase of an electric school bus through this appropriation. You also see a number of other vehicles. Those vehicles that come under the green color code are vehicles that we know that are available today as EV. And by today, I mean at some point in the near future because, as everyone knows, the supply chain issues relative to car ordering is, is pretty, pretty wild out there right now. You can see Ford F-150, they just released this year, their all-electric F-150 model. I've seen it. It's absolutely tremendous. The issue is that they have 30,000 orders for it. So we wouldn't know. There's going to be some backorder issues when we get to that. As you go down the list, you can see these vehicles, the green is, as I said, it's things we know we can transition to relatively quickly. Transit vans, sedans, school buses, those are the things that we're looking at really hard right now. As you get into the yellow, you get into areas where those electric vehicles exist, but they, for a number of reasons, they may be hard to procure. They may not quite be, we may not be quite be ready for them. Particularly, I'll, I'll point to the police cruiser line. This appropriation isn't going to carry us to the new building for police cruisers. As we've discussed with this body, as approved by this body, the garage that will house our police cruisers is going to be fully equipped to handle electric police cruisers. But that garage isn't going to be online for a couple of years. So we, the team decided we should probably put EV as a probably not in this round, more, more likely hybrid when it comes to police cruisers in this round. And then finally, you get to the last handful of vehicles, and these are the big, heavy equipment pieces, bucket truck, dump truck, those sorts of things where EV at this point in time is just not possible, doesn't exist. With that, I'll open up to any questions you might have.
Okay. Council President DeBonner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Walker, thank you for coming and bringing these items in front of us. It's been a few years now, 2015, my very first year on the council, I came in with a resolution, the at-large councils at the time with Joe Finn and Neil Liang, we came in with a resolution about getting into the next technological phase of electric vehicles and electric fleets around the city. And to see the administration come to some type of fruition with putting charging stations into new parking garages and all across the city has been, has been a huge plus. I just want to say thank you because working together here to try to make measures meet and get into the next phase of things where you talked a little bit about some of the ones, natural resources, the school buses, some transit vans, some passenger vans, and sedans for the inspectional services, where we could go all-electric. And then there's a hybrid group in the middle with the DPW, TPAL, police. And then on, in a different phase where you, where you can't go hybrid or electric at this point, thinking about the future. I just, you know, worked with Shelley Dean before with her, she's a huge activist for this, and to work together, collaboratively, it's been huge. These vehicles that you have in front of you, are these the most top priority or most, I guess I could say, the most needed for right now?
Through, Mr. Chairman, yes, Counselor, this is similar to Commissioner Heinz, the list that he procured for this body. This is not the full body of need in terms of vehicle replacement at this time. These are, in discussing with department heads, these are the immediate needs that we felt was appropriate to come in with and went in for this year's allocation.
Usually, we have the police chief that comes in. Every year, we try to outfit some of the cruisers. We have here about a $500,000 appropriation here in this, this particular item. But how many do you think of the police cruisers and equipment? Do you think you'll outsource or move over with that 500,000?
Sure. That's probably, if it's the full 500, I want to be clear too, that the appropriation provides a little bit of flexibility here. The police department also needs some equipment. There could be some, some radio purchases involved in their line. And it also depends on how much we are able to buy electric, the expense of those electric vehicles, the grant monies that we do get. I mentioned the EPA grant. There is a ton of resources out there for EV. So that, it's almost like a sliding scale, Counselor. The more rebate money, the more grant money, the more outside sources that we can put into the EV transition, the more police cruisers we, we can buy. As you know, as the chief has said repeatedly, those vehicles turn over very, very quickly. We do, as this body is approved every year, a substantial, substantial might be a little bit strong, but there is an amount every year for the police chief to get in for at least four or five, sometimes a little bit more, sometimes a little bit less, depending on our other equipment needs. Because we have put, built that budget line into the budget, but that's not going to cover all of our needs. So it's going to be within the police chief's discretion here, but all in, you know, this is eight to 10 police cruisers.
Okay.
It could be more, it could be less.
On the school buses, do we have any electric or hybrids on the school buses as of right now, currently?
We do not. We are running all diesel, Counselor.
So these school buses will be a straight electric, these two to four buses?
Correct. And again, I, I mentioned two to four because an electric school bus is substantially more expensive than a diesel school bus. And it's just going to be a question of doing the math and figuring out how much money we get. There's a, a second federal government program that should be coming out very soon that is capable of picking up the entire cost of a school bus. The grant that we have now is about 250,000, but that's split between four buses. So I think it's, Eric, you'll be amazed, my math here, I think that's about 60,000 a bus that will allow us to be offset through that. It's going to depend also, we, we are studying a number of different locations where these electric buses can be housed. Obviously, it's not the same as storing a diesel bus. We need to have charging stations. We need infrastructure built. And we're baked in to this cost, potential for that infrastructure cost at, at the locations where they may be a fit.
Currently, right now in the city of Quincy, what do we have for amount of charging stations and, and I guess I could say enough electricity to get into these vehicles? I mean, we know we have it in the Hancock new lot. What, how many do we kind of have out there in the city?
From a municipal capacity, we have none at the moment. To charge our city vehicles, actually, I believe one, we have one at the, the firehouse because that's where the, the fire department has an electric vehicle. From a public standpoint, I would say a couple dozen at this point. Obviously, the Hancock lot, the new garage at North Quincy T Station. We're working on right now, public charging stations at the Vane Street parking lot for public use. There are spaces at the new Southwest Middle, Middle School for public charging. So I would, I, I'm estimating, not guessing, but I would say a couple dozen at the moment. So I would, eh, I'm estimating, not guessing, but I would say a couple dozen at the moment.
It's good that we're, we're moving along with trying to get these, these electric vehicles. Obviously, the MBTA, the new Lowe's facility, it's going to be all-electric with the buses and the MBTA buses, which will be huge for the city of Quincy with, with the fact of the emissions and all that extra diesel going all over the place. Also, the, the rates have physically gone substantially high with, I guess, gas prices at $5, diesels at 6. So these prices might sustain for a little while. It'll also, I see in here, the forestry bucket truck. What do we have currently right now for bucket trucks out there for the natural resources department, especially for our trees and stuff?
We have one right now, councillor.
We have one, so this will make it two.
This supplements, this will be two.
What's the life of that other bucket truck? Do you know?
That one is not too old, I don't think. I think it's within 10, 10 years or so. I do have a recollection of that being a purchase within our administration, councillor.
Okay. I appreciate this, this items of what we have here in front of us. These are much needed. We need to, I mean, the police chief was always in here every year talking about, we have to kind of outsource these vehicles, we're going to move these ones in, these ones have a certain amount of life on them. And, and these, these basically have to be outfitted at some point. So I appreciate you guys coming in here with this appropriation here. But that's it for my questions for right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
I didn't even have my hand up. Thank you, councillor. Well, I'm glad to see, I agree, I'm glad to see that we're seeing some electric vehicles. So I know what you just mentioned, Mr. Walker, but you said that they, you have to find a location for them. Where, what are the tentative locations that you're thinking about putting the buses? Because currently, they're in Squanum, right? That's where they house the buses?
Yeah, that, that facility.
Underwater.
Well, useful, correct.
Wouldn't be good for electric.
Correct. We, we know that we cannot have electric buses there.
I'm glad we know that.
Long-term, the building we discussed tonight is a possibility.
It has flooding problems, too.
In the short-term, not quite as, it's a little bit more sustainable in that area. Short-term, we're looking at a number of spots. Quite frankly, if we're doing, if we end up doing one or two buses, we could locate them at almost any school and find a spot there. If we're looking for a dedicated facility, I'd hate to draw any speculation. There's two or three sites that we have in mind, that we've studied, that would work. So, you know, we're fairly comfortable we'll be able to get to that, to that place, but I don't.
I'm not, again, this is, the fact that we're actually talking about electric vehicles is great, and it's not going to, you're not going to have them tomorrow, it's going to take a bit to get them, correct?
That is correct, as I, as I said earlier. Even the non-electric vehicles, we had ordered some vehicles, DPW, a year ago, that we still haven't taken delivery of.
Right. So, I mean, that is one of the challenges we're going to have, is just like a lot of people out there that need cars, the cost is going up, it's going to take a while for you to get them. You might be getting them without the computer chips, like there's issues that you're going to be getting things. One of the questions I do have is, how many vehicles did we buy last year with the, with the ARPA monies? I know there were some investments in the ARPA fund. So how much have, how many vehicles have been, and they're not included in this, this is additional.
No, this is supplementing that.
Because we have a lot of new vehicles right now, not necessarily electric, but a lot of new vehicles.
I think Mr. Mason can answer that question, specific number of vehicles that we bought using federal COVID assistance.
Yes, I can. Good evening, committee. To get general number, we bought primarily, they were pickup trucks. We bought because of the parks and cemetery department having, usually they run a two or three man crew, and they were getting pretty badly beaten up from COVID applications. And we also purchased a vehicle for the health department, too, which with obvious reasons with why that would be done during an emergency. In total, I believe the number is around half a dozen.
Half a dozen. Did we get, or do we already have them for like the emergency? I know emergency management has a vehicle. I guess what's the inventory of, that's one of the things I'd like to know, is an inventory of the, the vehicles that we do currently have? I realize these are new, new vehicles that you're looking to purchase, but what we get is these vehicle priorities, but we don't have an inventory of what's being rolled off, what's being rolled in, and what the lifespan of some of these things are. I'm sure you have that.
That was part of the National Grid study, and there is, there is a difference in lifespan between electric.
I just got the National Grid study tonight at my desk, so I didn't really get a chance to study it.
Yeah, so that would have the right.
So it's part of that tonight, so do you, can you, I didn't get to study, can you give me any information on it?
Yeah, I mean, it's a fairly complex fleet. I mean, the city functions more of a conglomerate when it comes to vehicle management. You have everything from your heavy, what we call commercial-grade frames, running for your parks, for your parks, your cemetery, your DPW. So you're talking a 350 frame or larger. We do have some hybrid internationals, but if you talk about heavy equipment, too.
No, just talking about all the vehicles. I mean, we see, what I have noticed is we have a lot of new vehicles. We have like snow removals for the downtown, we have little kind of Jeep-like four-wheel drive type things that are, that are happening. I don't know when they came online, I don't know when we purchased them, where we purchased them from. I guess that's what I'm trying to get at, is there's, you see them, you know, I'm seeing them like all over the city. It's great, but I just don't know where they're coming from, where the funds came to buy those things. That would be my first question. If it's in the package, you know, I guess I can study it, I just thought because, you know, you're probably approving these things that you might be able to tell us. That would be great, though. I mean, I guess, I guess you have the National Grid study that's going to tell us for the, for the energy efficiency and getting electric, electric. The other thing is, is that this is a $3 million ask, and this is an appropriate, this is an appropriate use of ARPA money. You can use $3 million just to purchase these equipments if we wanted to, instead of bonding it. I know that we'd like to bond things, but this is actually an appropriate use. And the question that I had regarding the grants, one of the reasons why, when you're funding something like this and you're hoping for two, two to four buses at 900,000, I'm not sure if this is you, Mr. Mason, or you, Mr. Walker, is the hope that you'll supplement that 900,000, or is it the hopes that you'll be able to get, you know, double the amount of vehicles if you get more money in the grants? Because if we're funding $3 million, and this is $900,000 for two to four vehicles, and we're going to have these offsets with these grant monies, or federal grant monies that could be coming out, is it the hope that you'll be able to acquire more or bond less? Because once we bond, you can use the money.
Correct, I think what, what, correct. What's, what's in front of the body is $3 million in vehicle purchases. If we are successful in obtaining a substantial amount of grant money and other sources of money for this, we would reallocate the appropriation to just keep working down that priority list of vehicles.
So you'd work down that priority list of vehicles, would you, like I said, would you, would you end up buying, if you, let's just say, for, let's just say you've got $900,000 for, for grant money and for electric vehicles, would you then get eight buses? Or would you, I guess what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I mean, we would try to, we would want to continue the EV transition as much as humanly possible. If we are lucky enough to get hypothetically that a million dollars in grant money, we'll use the portion of this appropriation to offset that grant money to purchase additional electric buses. So if we get a million dollars, let's call it, that might end up being five or six.
Right.
At that point. So yeah, that would be, yes, that would be what we would look to do, councillor.
So would you then come back to the council? This is my, this is my issue, this is why I'm asking. So this National Grid and EV study, I can go through here to figure out how many vehicles we have, but what I'm really looking for is if we, if we fund $3 million, will we get a report back at the city council when you get the grants to let us know what you actually purchased? I mean, I think all too many times, we approve money here at the city council, but we either don't know when it's, I can't help but use, I'll use Greenleaf Building as an example. We thought somebody was going to go into it, and it's seven years later, and we're not. And, you know, it's a different song and dance for things, but this is, this is an issue that I have, is, you know, approving something and getting something are two different things. And then the grant money that we get is incredibly beneficial to the, to the taxpayers of the city of Quincy, and it would be beneficial for us to know what it, what it gets us. And that's a positive thing. So I know you guys want to tell us positive things, so I know that that's not something that you wouldn't want to do. But on the other side of things, I have to go back and say, this is appropriate use of ARPA monies, $3 million being bonded out by the taxpayers of the city of Quincy, and you can still get the grant money no matter how you're funding it. The issue that I have is that, you know, the taxpayers of the city of Quincy are, are paying more taxes, I get it, our assessed values are going up. But, you know, today, the Federal Reserve, I'm going to say it again, went up three quarters of a point, and it's going to keep going up, and it's, and the cost of living is going up, but some of these people aren't getting raises. Some of these people are living paycheck to paycheck, and every time we spend money, it's going to hurt them, and it's going to hurt them in the long run, because this is, this is the fact of the matter of, of the expenses that are having. There's a lot of new vehicles that are happening here in the city of Quincy as well. So the ARPA money would be the appropriate use. The last question I have is, and this is a question that's been coming to me from a lot of different people through the city and around, how many people are, you know, that are, that use our vehicles, that work in our city, that use these vehicles, take them home? Do we have, do we know what the percentage of those are that take the vehicles home?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, very, very few. We can certainly provide, off the top of my head, I can give you the, the basics with the caveat that I may miss one or two. Police chief, fire chief, DPW commissioner, inspectional services commissioner, public buildings, no.
Anybody else?
There are definitely a few within the police department for obvious reasons that I wouldn't necessarily know. But.
I think there might be a handful more. And the reason why I ask that is because.
DPW, there's, there's more in DPW. People that are on a call.
Yeah. So the concern is, is that, that one of the concerns that's come to me, and I'm sure may be coming to other city councillors, is, and, you know, and it would be great to know what that list is or what the policy is for that, but some of these people don't live in the city of Quincy, they're driving the vehicles home, they're putting wear and tear on the cars, and now the gas prices are going up. So taxpayers are noticing that vehicles are in other towns that are the city of Quincy's, and they're not necessarily local, too. So it's a problem, because, you know, when you get that kind of feedback, it's, it's not a positive feedback for when we're purchasing vehicles, but it should be something that we're paying attention to. We hadn't had to worry about that in recent years, because this is the first time in a long time that gas has been over, is up towards $5. It's just something that we should probably take fair warning on, that, because the vehicles, the, the people who work for the city don't pay for the gas that's going into the vehicles that are going home to their communities. And by no means am I suggesting that they shouldn't have that. I'm suggesting that we should really kind of pay attention to what's happening, because the taxpayers are paying attention. I get those kind of phone calls, and I think it's important that we have some transparency of those types of things, especially when we're bringing on new vehicles. Natural resources, I think, at least from what I could see, there were a lot of new trucks, maybe those are the half dozen that you just purchased with the COVID money, that none of us know where the COVID money was being spent, but this is appropriate use for COVID money. I'm going to make a recommendation that we use COVID money for this $3 million. And maybe, maybe the mayor can come back and give us that, that answer on Tuesday night.
No.
Maybe not.
Okay. Any other councillors wishing to, wishing to speak? I do believe we have a couple items, like on who's taking cars home and stuff like that. Can we get that? Is there a motion on the floor?
There is a motion on the floor.
Oh, no. Would you like to make a motion, councillor?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve these vehicles.
Motion has been made. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Clerk will read the roll.
Councillor Kane.
Yes.
Councillor DeBona.
Yes.
Councillor Mahoney.
Aye, president.
Councillor McCarthy.
Yes.
Chairman Phelan.
Yes.
All members.
Okay. But there will be, there will be a final vote on that, actually, at the council meeting, and a couple of things that will look at for information. If we can have that, that would be fine. Okay. Seeing no other items on the agenda?
Yeah, there's one more, one more. The 2000, 20022-083 has to come out.
Yeah. I'm sorry, yes, that is on the, that is on the agenda. That is.
Motion approved.
Motion has been made for the floor.